Annohu.
Here.
Apologies, councillor O'Leary, councillor Onyemera.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
I'm sure.
Councillor Quinn.
I'm sure.
Councillor Ryan.
Yes.
Councillor Sheehan.
Here.
Councillor Shovland.
Here.
Councillor Thormy.
Here.
Apologies, councillor Troy, councillor Walsh.
I'm sure.
I hope everybody had their names and are we okay to commence? All right, as we may have heard, our mayor, Mayor Brian McDonagh, has Covid and has asked that I chair the meeting in his place. I hope that's fine? Agreed? Agreed. Okay, members, I would like to go through the guidelines as is tradition here. All mobile phones should be on silent or switched off for the duration of the meeting. Please note that this meeting is being webcast. All members, please remember to switch off your microphone when you have finished speaking. All members are reminded that the chamber is a non-smoking vaping area. Standing orders will apply to all aspects of the meeting. Councillors are reminded of the provisions of standing order ninety-two. And that says all members are bound to act in accordance with the ethics framework and code of conduct for local authority members to cooperate with the orderly conduct of meetings, the direction of the mayor and in a manner that is respectful of colleagues. Members have been circulated with the agenda for today's meeting and any member forming the view that they have a conflict of interest in the matters of subject to today's agenda should now disclose same. Councillors are also reminded of the provisions of standing order number ninety-three. Members must bear in mind that discussions at council meetings are not privileged. No member may make any false statements imputing proper motives or use offensive or unbecoming statements, words, in reference to any member of the council, employee of the council or any other person. Any member having made such statements or used such objectionable words and not explaining or retracting same or offering apologies for the use thereof when requested by the mayor to do so shall be called upon by the mayor to withdraw from the meeting. Members making any such statements or comments may find themselves also personally liable to them. Agreed? I hope that's okay, okay. So we'll move to the agenda for today. Yeah, confirmation and reaffirmation of minutes of council and annual meetings. Confirmation and reaffirmation of minutes of council meetings held on Monday, the thirteenth of May, twenty twenty-four. Agreed? Yeah, propose? Okay, seconded? Okay. Right, are we? Yeah, okay. That's fine. So we'll move on very quickly to emergency motion. We have two emergency motions for today. The first is by councillor Dean Mulligan. That was received at round about three o'clock today. Will probably, do we have that up? Okay, and I have looked at the guidelines for emergency motions and the time that is requested, required to be in and I ruled that out of order because it came in very late and it doesn't meet the criteria for emergency motion. I have also put forward an emergency motion myself and haven't looked at the guidelines for emergency motions, despite the fact that it came in very early, but I also ruled that out of order because it doesn't meet the criteria for emergency motion. Agreed? Okay. Confirmation and reaffirmation of minutes of annual meeting held on Friday, the twenty-first of June, twenty twenty-four. Any proposal? Proposed? Seconded? Okay. So agreed? Confirmation and reaffirmation of minutes of adjourned annual meeting held on Monday, the twenty-fourth of June, twenty twenty-four. Proposed? Seconded? Okay. Adopted, right. We move to item number two A, nominations, elections of chair persons for. Okay, yeah.
Can I just get clarification? You ruled my emergency motion out on the timelines or the fact it is an emergency? I'm just wondering for context, was it the timeline itself or your understanding of it being an emergency motion? Because you mentioned both and I'm just wondering in terms of why it was ruled out, is it because it wasn't before ten AM this morning?
Oh, no, I said she on two grounds. One, it doesn't meet the criteria for an emergency motion. Okay, and secondly, it came late.
I accept it came late, hence emergency motions do, but I would refute the second point and I will be putting it forward for the chief executive's report in that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's ruled out of order, so it stays that way. Thank you. Okay, so election of chair person for Barbrigan, Rush, Lusk Sods Area Committee. Proposals?
I'd like to propose councillor Tom O'Leary, please.
Okay. Any other proposals? Okay. Sorry, before that, anyone seconded in that?
Seconded.
Okay, seconded in the first one, yeah, okay. Yeah. Second as well, okay. Any other proposals? And anyone proposing for Malaka Queen?
Yeah, I propose.
Okay, seconded? Okay, councillor Onyemera seconded in that, okay. Right. Okay, so. Okay, any other proposals besides these two? Okay, so we call for a roll call vote. Roll call vote will be put up on the screen. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Green would be for councillor O'Leary and red would be for councillor Queen. It's not, it's not coming up. Okay, I think, should I make? Yeah, yeah. Okay. Members, the votes are in, but I'm sure you would have observed that instead of councillor Jay Onwemere, we have councillor Brian McDonagh voting yes. That's because obviously he is the mayor and mine hasn't come up, so I suppose that should. Members, are we all okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, but the admin team will reflect it appropriately, you know, in the votes. Yeah. We can do, we can do a physical roll call if we want to. Yeah. I walk over there, yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, thank you for that and we, we're taking that count now.
Members, eighteen votes in favour of councillor O'Leary, twelve votes in favour of councillor Quinn and one to abstain.
Okay. Okay, so with the vote, I would like to announce councillor O'Leary as chair of the Sods, Barbrigan, Rush, Lusk Area Committee. Agreed? Okay. And we'll go to two B, election of chairperson of Blanchester, Mohodar, Casenoch, Ongar Area Committee. Propose? Any other proposals?
Councillor Doyle.
Second.
Councillor Doyle. Any other nominations? Okay. Okay, similarly councillor Onwemere will be green and councillor Doyle will be red. If we may vote now, please.
Eighteen votes councillor Onyemera, thirteen votes for councillor Doyle, zero abstentions.
Okay, members, with that councillor Onwemere has been elected the chair of the Blanchester, Mohodar, Casenoch, Ongar Area Committee. Agreed?
Agree that the mayor doesn't have to leave every time there's a vote and we'll accept the McDonagh vote as being the deputy mayor's vote for the duration of the meeting.
Thank you for that, thank you. Okay.
I only made a point earlier on for our next meeting that we wouldn't have to go through that. It's not your fault that we don't have a proper system up there for this type of situation. And if that can be addressed for our next meetings, I'm more than happy to proceed on councillor guidance.
If members are happy that for the next meeting and not today's meeting, then absolutely that is fine, agreed? Okay, so in the meantime, could I ask somebody to, or maybe I'll just press the mails, yeah. All right, thank you. Election of chairperson, that's two C, election of chairperson of Huth, Malahide Area Committee. Propose?
I'd like to propose councillor Evian Thormy, please.
Okay, seconded. Any other proposal? Okay, no other proposal? Okay, so councillor Thormy has been elected as chair. Agreed? Okay. Two E, appointment of two members to Dublin North East Drug and Alcohol Tax Force. Any proposals? Yeah. Okay.
Members, this committee has been in operation over the last number of years and the Leiley landfill are registered on Parkers is, it's nearly ready for completion. There's further discussions to take place between operations and ourselves and environment. So instead of setting up a committee, what we do is we come back to the members with a report on that, if that's okay. And then if there's a need for a committee at that stage, we don't think there will be, but if there's a need for a committee, we bring the members up to date on that. But we're not proposing, if it's agreeable with the members, to fill that at the moment.
Agreed.
Agreed.
For me. If, was a committee which is made up of the councillors of the Rush, Lusk electoral area and that was an issue which was decided by the members. So I wonder where this proposal comes from.
The membership of the committee, there was two from each of the areas, Rush, Lusk, Sods. That, well, that's, that's what was in place previously.
That was a lot of council.
It was. Well, as I said, members, liaison committee, the Leiley landfill is nearly complete and ready for handover. There's further discussions to take place between operations and environment on that and then we'll bring back a further report to the members on that. And with your agreement, we'll do that over the next couple of months.
Yeah, councillor Donoghue, yeah.
Thank you, mayor. No, I agree with the director of services. I know the, the two managers are going back and forth and they're, I believe, nearly have it over the line. So if we can defer this until the next meeting or when the report's done and then bring it back, I think that's the best way going about this.
Councillor Mulvaney?
Thanks, yeah, just looking for some clarification on the timeline of bringing the report back. So I think councillor Donehill's made a good proposal to, I guess, bring it back to the next meeting in September. Is that what's proposed? Because I think that would make sense if we're going to get a report back in, in the September meeting on this, it would make sense. Thanks, Chair.
We'll bring, sorry, sorry, Chair. We'll bring a report back to the September to the members.
Councillor Thormy?
Yeah, just to say if it could be maybe discussed in an informal briefing with the members of that LEA. Unfortunately, our councillor isn't here today, but I know would be, you know, interested in that outcome and then maybe you can have a decision before it's brought to the meeting. So it's all sorted, thank you.
Yeah, there's no issue with that.
Oh, great, okay. Appointment of six members to Baliley Landfield Liaison Committee. Okay, sorry, sorry. Appointment of two, apologies, appointment of two members to Dublin North East Drug and Alcohol Tax Force. Proposal? Yeah, for Huth, Malahide, I beg your pardon, yeah. Nominations? Okay, if there are no nominations and none, yeah.
Yes, yeah, councillor Hopkins isn't here today, but she asked to have her name put forward if possible. So councillor Joan Hopkins, please.
Okay, John Hopkins. Any other names? Any seconded? Okay, yeah, councillor Mulligan, yeah. Any other nominations?
Because I'm not fully in the loop with everything. Both can you nominate a councillor to a C or to a committee without them actually being present in the room at the meeting or on the roll around at that time?
So, okay. All right, so any other, we actually need two names, so we have one. We need one more. Okay, so at least. Okay, councillor Howie. And seconded? Okay. Councillor Cabernet-Mangan seconded? Any other nominations, agreed? Okay, so councillor Hopkins and councillor Howie elected to that committee. Members of Dublin North East Drug Alcohol for Huth, Malahide. Thank you. Right, so members, we move to questions, item number three to ten. Any proposals? Seconded? Agreed? Okay, so that's adopted. Eleven, report of committees. Eleven, a report of corporate policy group meeting held on Monday, first July, twenty twenty-four. Proposed? Seconded? Councillor Donoghue? Okay. Agreed? Okay. Financial matters, we have no business today. Proposed disposals of properties, no business. Declaration of roads, no business. Item number fifteen, judicial reviews, authorisation portion to one five three to of Local Government Act two thousand and one. I would like to call on the chief executive to give us some insight here, please.
Members, the full report has been circulated with the supporting documentation and should have been available to all of you. Just to note one small correction in relation to case two, which I might ask the staff just to scroll down to the, the four cases at the end. It relates to the full hearing of case number two, which is listed for hearing on the twenty-ninth of October, twenty twenty-four, so later this year rather than the twenty twenty-five that's mentioned there for case two. Further down in the report, the resolution that is required is outlined just there. A little further up, if you don't mind. So I'm asking for the resolution to be agreed in respect of all four cases.
Thank you, members. Thank you. Item sixteen, creative island grants. Agreed? Item number sixteen, creative island grants. Proposed? Seconded by? Okay, agreed? Seventeen, draft strategic policy committee S P C scheme. Proposed? Okay. Seconded by? Okay, agreed? Eighteen, two thousand and three, acts and, act, acts and grant scheme. Proposed? Seconded by? Okay, councillor McDonagh. Agreed? Nineteen, report on proposed extinguishment of right-of-way at Barbers Town Lane North. Okay, proposed? Seconded? Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, Miss Dally, yeah.
Thanks very much, mayor. This is an extinguishment of public right.
Way at Barbers Town Lane North. It would have been provided under the part eight, which was approved by the previous council. And Mr Keane is here and he can give a presentation on it.
So the Ongar Barn Hill Road, part eight was granted for this road a few years ago. Sorry, part eight was granted for this road a few years ago. It'll provide for the Barn Hill Local Area Plan. It will also provide for a safer road along with additional cycleways. The road commenced construction in September last year and the extinguishment of right-of-way procedure for Barbers Town Lane North, which is necessary because of this new road procedure started in late January, February. You can see the road basically links from Ongar to the R one four nine. It'll replace a lot of the more older bends in that area and provide a new road. This was. So the new, some of the benefits of the scheme, it'll, it'll make the road network safer. It'll also connect into future Kellystown lands and also allow for a future bridge near Barbers Town and allow for housing in the area. That's an extract from the part eight planning permission that was granted for the scheme which shows the closure of Barbers Town Lane North, which is necessary to construct the road embankment for this road. The road is a single carriageway road. That's a recent photograph taken in June, looking south from the new bridge over the railway line towards Barbers Town Lane North. That's looking north from Barbers Town Lane North. The road where the, which we need to close to construct this, this new, new road. It's a planned view of the road, it's a single carriageway road. I mean, it has provision for a bus lane in the future. Should it be required. Stage timelines, BAM, were appointed last year. The, the bridge is eighty percent complete and so a lot of the embankment on the northern side is complete and Barbers Town Lane South will be upgraded as part of this scheme, which will allow for the road to be closed. And expected completion is mid next year. That's the drawing of the extinguishment of right-of-way, which shows closure either side of the proposed embankment, the embankment that's already under construction. This is a view of the Barn Hill Local Area Plan, which was adopted in February two thousand and nineteen, which shows the network of active traveller routes and roads through that area that will provide linkage onto the, the road currently being constructed. This is the diversion route for the road closure back along Barbers Town Lane North and along Barbers Town Lane South. Now, over the last, during March, we put in nine more passing bays to make this a safe diversion route. And a lot of Barbers Town Lane South will be upgraded over the coming months and open by towards the end of this year. So consultation started back in late January this year. We wrote to all the residents and they basically had five months to to send in submissions on this or to contact us or discuss anything with us. And it concluded on July the third. That's it, thanks.
Proposed? Any any comments? Okay. Agreed? Okay, thank you very much. Item number twenty, marine development, Oriole Wind Farm. Proposed? We have a presentation on that as well.
Thank you. So this this item and item number twenty one, they relate to two offshore wind farm developments. And they're some of the first proposals we've seen for development in the maritime area under new legislation that came in in twenty twenty one, the Maritime Area Planning Act. And it made then related changes to the Planning and Development Act two thousand. So we're just starting to see the applications now. And this is an application that has to be made directly to the board. They deal with it, assess it, will make the decision on it. And submissions can be made to the board by individuals as well, up until the thirtieth of July. And then Fingal County Council were notified by the applicant that the application was being made. And that was a result of their pre-planning discussions they had with the board and the board directed them to do this. So having had sight of the application then before, we as the Coastal Planning Authority lodge a submission under section two nine one of the Planning and Development Act, we have to present the report to the members and then invite any comments or views of the members on the proposal. And you can also, there is the option available to, by resolution, decide to attach any recommendations specified in a resolution to the report of the chief executive. What happens then is that all of the comments and views are recorded. They're included in the report of the chief executives that is made to the board in addition to details of any resolution that the members may decide to pass in relation to the proposal. So then the first of those applications that we have now is for the Oriole Wind Farm. It's going to be twenty five offshore wind turbines with a maximum height of two hundred and seventy metres. And it's off the coast of County Louth. So it includes for ancillary offshore development, the undersea cables, substation, and it reaches land at the nearest point in County Louth, travels westwards over to RD where it kind of terminates at the Stikillan, where there'll be a new substation. So the applicant has set up a website where all the application documentation can be viewed. And that map there just shows the the broad location of the offshore part of it. And then you can see in blue just the line showing the onshore cable where it finishes at Stikillan, just east of RD. And that's just the onshore route there. So as you can see, it's all outside of the area of Fingal County. It's all concentrated offshore in Louth and onshore in Louth. So the chief executive report has just highlighted some of the key policies in our Fingal development plan in respect of renewable energy, where there is broad support in the plan for that, and also specifically for offshore wind energy production, where it's, you know, appropriate and then having regard to principles of the new national marine planning framework. We've also highlighted that there are objectives in the development plan in relation to highly sensitive landscapes, because all of that coastal area of Fingal is identified as a highly sensitive landscape. So it's important that any new development respects that and doesn't impinge it in any kind of significant way. But taking into account just the nature of the Oriole Wind Farm proposal, there's no works, as I say, within our jurisdiction, the support in the county development plan for offshore and renewable energy. And the proposal is broadly considered acceptable in terms of the landscape impact in Fingal. It's certainly visible from some parts of the coast in the northern area of the county, but it's not considered that it would, as I say, impinge significantly any of the character of the landscape in the county. So there's no specific recommendations coming out of that chief executive's report. So look, in terms of next steps then, if the members have any comments on that proposal, they could be recorded today and they'll be included in the chief executive's report in addition to any resolution. So if there's any specific comments, I can record them at this point.
This, and I'd just like to make sure that I'm read up on it and informed on what the actual plans are before we make any comment on it.
It is unfortunate, we're given a timeline for the receipt of our submission, that the thirtieth of July. So we're working to that timeframe. We could request an extension, but there's no guarantee that we would be given that. So that's why we've just brought it to our July meeting, where we're kind of caught with it, the timeframes ourselves as well with it.
The chief executive's report.
I think it's just comments that are recorded.
Or is it just comments that are made here today inside this chamber?
Yeah.
Okay.
Agreed?
And moving on to item twenty one then was the, is for the maritime development of the North Irish Sea, Oriole Wind Farm. And again, similarly, this has been lodged directly with the board. They've set out two options in the application documentation for the proposal, for the offshore elements. So there would be either thirty five or forty nine turbines with a maximum height of two hundred and sixteen metres. Again, there's similar ancillary offshore development of the substation, the subsea cables. They connect into the into the land side at Braymore. Again, it's an underground connection point. The route then travels westwards over to the western side of the O one three two, just north of Albriggan, where there's a proposed new substation just near the Flemington lands and the outskirts of Albriggan. And from there, then there'll be underground cables connecting southwards to the subs, existing substation at Bellcamp. So in contrast, this one is all all works kind of within Fingal, actually. So similar, there's a website set up with all of the documents and drawings for it and submissions have to be made by the ninth of August to the board. So that one just sets out the overall location of the turbine sighting out at sea and then the route, as I say, from Braymore, heading then south to Bellcamp. And there are two options again for that route as it approaches Bellcamp. And that drawing is just illustrating the location of the substation outside Albriggan. As I say, it adjoins the Flemington L A P lands just on the outskirts of the town. The substation itself, it's located on lands that are zoned or you in the development plan. And there is utility structures and they're permitted in principle within this zoning. So it is it is consistent with with the, in terms of the zoning and the development plan. And again, the chief executive report, as with the Oriole Wind Farm proposal, is highlighting the support in our county development plan for renewable and offshore wind energy. We consider it acceptable in terms of landscape impacts. There are some issues that we've identified and we've recommended conditions that should be attached in the event that the board do decide to grant permission. They include the details of finishes and things like lighting, landscaping around the substation at Braymore. And that's just to provide a high quality design, given that this is the key site in the approach to Albriggan town. Also, the management of the underground cable works, which are extensive along the O one three two heading south to Bellcamp. So they need careful management in terms of traffic management, the road opening licence system. So we're recommending conditions in that. Also in terms of construction working hours to try and minimise the impact of residents adjoining the works areas. In terms of access arrangements, just for the temporary and the permanent aspects of the proposal. And then finally, in terms of tree protection and landscaping, to make sure that there is no negative impacts on existing trees, landscaping, and that there, if there is, that there'll be compensatory planting provided. So they're the kind of the key issues that we picked out in relation to this proposal and, as I say, recommended that the board address should they decide to grant permission for it. And as with the last one at this stage, if there are any comments or views that the members would like to outline, they can be included then in the report that issues to the board.
Malika Queen, councillor Queen, please.
And just a preliminary look over the plans. The locations of the wind turbines are closer to Scarryes than they are to Albriggan, to twenty two kilometres from Albriggan and I believe twelve kilometres from Scarryes. It's just, just looking for clarification on the reason why. I had emailed in relation to this and I still hadn't got a response back. And my only assumption is, is that the that the actual ground where they're being located is is sturdier at twenty two kilometres from Albriggan than it is the twelve kilometres from Scarryes. We're just looking for clarification of the locations of the wind turbines. Why are they closer to Scarryes than they are further away from Albriggan? Thank you.
Thank you.
In terms of that, they have set out two options for the turbines in that confirm which option they're proceeding with to the board. In terms of the the precise locations, I wouldn't be aware of the details. I think a lot goes into the terms of the technical rationale, things like aviation, ecology, biodiversity. There's a good deal of considerations that go into it. So in terms of the assessment of alternatives, they're proposing these locations as what they see as being the best from environmental and technical feasibility.
Okay, and thank you. I think just to make things, to speed up things a little bit, we'll take all the speakers. We, shall I continue here? Oh, no, we take all the speakers and then we ask Ms Jeddah to, yeah, to respond. Is that okay? Okay, so next, councillor Healy.
Gromogat Tare, and thanks for the the presentation. The these wind farm developments are are very welcome. They're an essential part of the decarbonisation of of our electricity system and of our overall economy and society. The the local issue in relation to to this one is particularly in relation to the impact that it's likely to have on the road, the use of the roads in the Malahide. I I would say probably also further further north as well, but I'm aware of the Malahide Hoth area. And very long closure periods are described in the report of the Malahide Road being closed for eleven weeks. Swords Road being closed for seven weeks, Estory Road between six and twelve weeks, depending on the route taken. It's not completely, there, there's the discussion in the in the in the report talks about, well, potentially you could just close it at night and so on. It's not entirely clear and it seems that it hasn't really been been teased out yet. And I'd be interested to to know, you know, what level of discussion has has taken place there. There are particular safety concerns with some of the roads which would be affected. If the the road between Malahide and Swords is used as proposed, then that is going to divert traffic onto Yellow Walls Road with its inadequate footpaths and really very dangerous circumstances for buses trying to pass pedestrians already as it exists.
Thank you.
That that's that's kind of the a central issue. But looking at it, there is a question as to why the obvious kind of direct route down hasn't been taken, which would be along the motorway.
Thank you, councillor Healy.
If there's any information on that, I'd be very grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And councillor O'Brien?
Thanks, deputy mayor. Yeah, similar query to councillor Healy is is in terms of the the impact on the proposals as as regards, excuse me, as regards the road closures and the laying of of the cables in in the Malahide area. There's, and in fairness to the community forum there in Malahide, they've they've engaged with NISA on a number of occasions. And they've done a lot of work themselves in terms of contacting landowners in the area to see about putting forward an alternative route for the cable that would mainly pass under Greenfield's land. Now, they haven't gotten much joy out of NISA in terms of that proposal, but certainly I think it very much has has merit if if it's a case it can be done. So I suppose you referenced in in the reports, you know, the potential conditions suggested by the planning departments around cables, et cetera, on the road network and how that will be managed. I'd like a couple of things, some some more detail in terms of what the planning department are thinking on that. And secondly, there's there's a request from from the community forum to engage directly with the planning department before the planning reports, before the Fingal reports goes in. So I'd just like to ask, is that a possibility or are you precluded from from engaging with with community groups such as that? Because I think they probably, as I said, there's been a lot of work put in in terms of devising a a route that might, that the intention being it will cause minimum disruption to the road network. But councillor Healy's point on the M one is is very valid also. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor O'Brien. Councillor Ryan Brennan?
Deputy Mayor. In the full report that was supplied to us, page seventeen, section three point five point two, which refers to offshore, you talk about photomontages having been prepared. And you talk about, based on the details submitted, that it's your feeling that it will not impinge in any significant way on the landscape. Now, I'm not sure if Ms Moonan is able to put the photograph up that I. Okay, the background to this is that there has been a group formed in Scarryes, you know, having visited the public presentations by Statcraft and having looked at different iterations of what they had presented and looked at their photomontages, that everything was not as it seemed in terms of how things were being represented by Statcraft. So this group are not opposed to wind and very supportive of wind. They've a view that it ought to be thirty five kilometres out rather than what the current proposal is. Now, this is a model that this group has put together. And basically, if you look at the bottom left hand corner, you will see Rockabilly at forty five metres high. And basically, the what you see there is the wind, the turbines at two hundred and ninety metres high. And they did some mathematical modelling from a reliable source in terms of how this will appear, you know, from the shore at Scarryes. So my ask basically at this, I mean, there's two asks. One is, when you say in the report that photomontages have been prepared and based on details submitted, are you referring to documents submitted by Statcraft?
Thank you.
Have you done any work on your own?
Thank you, councillor Ryan.
In terms of this, but what my ask is in general terms is, before the ninth or the eighth or the ninth of August, whatever your date is for this one, is that you should meet the group in Scarryes to satisfy yourself that this is not as it's going to look from the shore at Scarryes. Because I'm sure if you were to imagine that this would be how it would look, that you wouldn't use the phrase that this will not impinge in any significant way on the landscape.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you, I think your your point is well made, thank you. Councillor Tommy, please.
Thank you, yeah, my comments are similar to councillor O'Brien and councillor Healy. It's just some concern in relation to the laying of the underground cables through Malahide. I agree with the council's recommendation around the you know, the construction of the underground cable works, that that will have to be managed extremely carefully. But I think we need to be looking at the the route that has been selected along those main roads and seeing if alternative options are there. As has been said, the Malahide Community Forum have presented an alternative proposal. And similarly, I also got the request from Malahide Community Forum, which I sent on to Mr McElice last night, requesting that meeting. I'm not sure if that's possible or not to happen, but I would just like my comment. I'm not sure if that's possible or not to happen, but I would just like my comments in relation to the route selection of the underground cables noted and also the management of the construction of that, thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Tommy. Councillor Maguire.
Thank you Chair, again, similarly to previous councillors, councillor Ryan raises a valid point as to exactly what are we looking at in reality as opposed to a montage that gives us one idea and in reality it's totally different. In relation to the group in Skerrys, there's numerous people from Balbriggan who has attended those meetings in Skerrys and are also concerned with when it reaches land at Balbriggan and the size of the actual unit that will be beside, behind the Flemington LAP. It comes across as something that will be quite small, but in reality it will be quite large. At one of the presentations I was at, they talked about, you know, camouflaging it with trees and things like that, but in reality that will take 10 to 20 years to actually come to fruition. I am concerned also with when it reaches the land in Balbriggan as to the route it will travel. It does not make sense that the route will go up the main street in Balbriggan and close off the whole main street, so then it will actually turn right onto the Harry Reynolds Road where we currently have an eight million cycleway being done at present. So when this comes along, we dig the road up again. That is not good planning, it is not good value for money and there is scepticism out there as to what is right and what should be done. So I think they have to look at when they reach land, as to what route they go. Do they go through greenfield sites and bring it right out onto the M1, which would make sense? It's a lot of work and they would have to do an awful lot of consultation with landowners, but to come up the main street in Balbriggan is not on and then to go up the Harry Reynolds Road where there's eight million after being spent on a cycleway to dig it all up again, it doesn't make sense. So that's just my observations, thank you.
Thank you very much, right on time. Councillor Howie, please.
Thanks Chair, yeah, just to briefly follow on from councillor... councillor Tommy, if there was any way it would be possible for engagement with the Fingal planners to meet with the Malahide Community Forum who have an alternative route which they believe will cause less traffic disruption to residents, that would be much appreciative. And also just to note that I am supportive of obviously all forms of renewable energy if it can be done in a way that can obviously hand in hand not cause as much disruption. So yeah, just want to have those comments noted, thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Howie. Would give Ms Felon an opportunity to answer, thanks.
Thank you, those comments are noted for inclusion. Just in terms of engaging with kind of community groups, there isn't a facility within what's set out in the legislation for doing that as part of the chief executive's report. It's to represent kind of the views of Fingal County Council as a planning authority and incorporating the comments from the members as set out today. But groups and individuals are free to make their own individual submissions to the board. They can do that directly via the board's website or by post, so there is that option available to people if they wish to make the board aware of the comments and concerns that they have before a decision is made. In terms of route selection, I suppose the onus is on the applicant as part of their application documentation to justify their route selection. They've put forward a given proposal for the route. It's located within, say, the red line boundary of the site, so that's what the board will assess the merits of the proposal on. In terms of the kind of the impact on the local roads, that's certainly one of the issues that was, is identified in the report and there are concerns, as I say, within the council at the moment in terms of the length of road closures that are proposed and also whether the applicant has looked at the full range of options such as night time working or partial closures retaining access on a single lane basis as a means of rather, doing that rather than a full road closure. So that's in terms of what's set out at the moment, we wouldn't be entirely satisfied with it and that's why there is a recommendation that if the board did grant this proposal that the phasing and the types of road diversions or partial closures, full closures etc would all be agreed with the council prior to any development taking place so that we would be able to input into that and try and put a more acceptable proposal in place where to go ahead to try and minimise disruption on local roads and local communities and access as you've pointed out today. In terms of the imaging that's provided by the applicant, it's, the photomontages are supposed to depict an accurate view of a scheme as built. They would detail the type of camera lens and so forth and the angle that things, images are taken of and what they're projecting the image to be. So it is supposed to represent, as I say, what the development would look like in the event that it goes ahead. Again, if third parties or an individual has concerns that their own modelling offers a more accurate view, then again, that's something that can be brought to the attention of the board as part of the third party engagement with the application. It's our interpretation of the scheme is based on the drawings and the documents that the applicant has submitted. It's part of the scheme that we're required to prepare an environmental impact assessment report and that's where impacts on landscape and visual impact are a key part of that. And that's what the montages are prepared to feed into. Similarly, they have prepared imaging of the substation buildings at Braymore. They are certainly large scale in terms of the height. They did indicate how finishes could be used to try and blend it into the background more easily. Again, we've suggested that's something, if permission was granted, that details of those finishes be agreed with Fingal County Council before any development take place to make sure that they are of sufficient quality. It's buildings of that scale, it's, as has been pointed out, it takes a long time for landscaping to mature, so where something is visible, you want it to be the best quality that it is and that's why we have recommended that, this further detail provided in terms of those finishes. I think, yeah, I think that's most, in terms of a greenfield site option that was mentioned as well, I suppose there, that is the case, as I go back to what I was saying was in terms of the applicant has put forward this route for the cable, so it's a matter for them to demonstrate to the board that this is the best and most viable option for the underground cabling rather than going through a greenfield route. Say it'll be assessed on that basis as to whether it's acceptable in terms of the impacts and the, yeah, how it will affect the wider community.
Councillor Ryan, do you want to come in again?
I'm assuming from the answer there is that there could be no opportunity for any group to meet with you ahead of your deadline in terms of early August. If that is the case, would you be open to receiving a written submission, email submission to you in terms of expanding on the few thoughts that I've put up there today?
It is, in terms of the kind of the involvement with third parties, it's really, they would need to make their submission directly to the board. The report that comes in from Fingal County Council is just outlining the views of the council and the members here today, so there isn't really, there isn't a facility to kind of have that, those kind of meetings for community groups, they would be best to look into making a submission directly to the board, I think themselves. They can do that.
There's no significant impact on the landscape. So the board will refer to your report which says, and that's based on Statcraft's submission.
I think the board would have to take all submissions into account when they're making a decision on the application, you know, it's part of the process of, is, you know, a key component is this public consultation and inviting submissions and receiving them. So where people have made submissions, they need to, they would be taken into account then by the board when they're looking at the scheme.
Thank you, thank you Ms Felon and it's good to see it's not a closed case, you know, there's room to take in all the submissions and comments that have been made so far and on those grounds, shall we, agreed, yeah? Agreed, okay. Is it agreed, yeah? Okay. Oh, noted, yeah, okay, that's noted, thank you very much. And thank you Ms Felon. I would go to item number 22, the chief executive's report. I would ask the chief executive to make some remarks before we proceed, thank you.
Members take the report as read, I just want to acknowledge the work of the staff involved in Flavours of Fingal and the Malahide Castle concerts, they were all really good events. And to also just let members know that the contract is now signed with Duggan Brothers for the construction of the Swords Cultural Quarter and the 36 homes on Seaton Road. So that's really significant to reach that milestone and they will be on site imminently. So happy to take any questions and the team are here too to answer any questions you may have.
Councillor McCamley.
Thank you. Thank you for the chief executive's report and of course, thank you for Fingal, to everybody that was involved there. I was there in two days and it was absolutely brilliant, the children loved the circus, I have to say. But what I'm going to ask you about is the enterprise centres. In your report, you were saying that there was three centres will be engaged in one legal entity now called Innovative Fingal and that the current boards are to be dissolved. And I understand that the interim boards of directors will oversee this implementation of the Innovative Fingal. But I'd just like to know a little bit more, I know last week, the last meeting we had, we actually put forward some people to sit on base on the other enterprise boards and I'm just wondering what will that look like now when they dissolve the boards and have one entity? So it's just a bit of information really.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Councillor Doyle.
Chair, can you hear me? You can. I've just, first of all, I just want to thank the chief executive and also the events team for the Flavours of Fingal and all the Malahide and all the other events, the events that went on, absolutely wonderful. In relation to the Clonie to Blanchestown cycle lane, can the timeline, can a timeline be provided for the commencement of the cycle lane? And when you are referring to the landowners, what are the locations, could we have a drill down on the locations that you are referring to in relation to the lands, the master plans? Can you confirm the timeline for the rolling out of these master plans and will the draft and the final plans be presented to members in advance of the public release as well? They're my only questions, thank you.
Councillor Tommy.
Thank you, I just wanted to thank the operations department, particularly in the Hoth-Malahide area for all of the great work that they've done over the past year, few years, because a lot of it has kind of just come to the accumulation very recently in terms of the works on Chapel Road, which the operations agreed to acquire land and build that footpath and the new toilets, which work is being started on today. And then similarly in Hoth as well, the new playground, that's, you know, making great headway. So I just really wanted to acknowledge all the great work that is being done locally and thank everyone that has been involved in that. Before the election, I had raised the issue with regards to traffic calming and that it was just coming up quite a lot and that I think we need to be doing more investment in that into 2025. And I'm just wondering if the chief executive has any comment on traffic calming measures going forward in the county and whether we will be doing a significant investment in that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Donnelly, please.
Thank you, thanks for the report. I just note that an awareness officer will be conducting a review of resources available to combat graffiti in Dublin 15 and that has been something that has been spoken about quite a bit at our area meetings. I would like to see some more done while I welcome the actions that have been taken. A particular area that we see a lot of graffiti in the area, in our area is utility cabinets that are owned by different utility companies, ESP, Virgin, what have you, who aren't really very cooperative when it comes to working with us to remove the graffiti of their infrastructure. So I was wondering, have we, have we done anything more about that to try and get them to work with us to clear the graffiti in a timely manner? And just secondly, I was wondering, have you got any timeline for the extended areas of Coolmine, which we spoke a lot about this time last year? And we were looking towards the end of this year, so it would be great to see that happening sooner rather than later, thank you.
Thank you councillor Donnelly. Councillor Mulville, please.
Thanks Chair and thanks to the chief executive for the report and all the updates and all the various work going on. It's particularly great to see the bridge for the Broadmills Way in the report there, what it's going to look like and the fact that it's kind of been constructed at the moment before it's put on site. Just two points, just two points I'd like to raise, just in terms of the Flavours of Fingal, to congratulate everyone, as chief executive said, it was a brilliant event and I think every year it's getting better in terms of, you know, how it's running and the traffic management and all the things that have been done much better and it was great to have the pop-up gale talk event which the local Kookarara on Dunabaite enjoyed running and being part of. I had a bit of feedback from parents of neurodivergent children who, you know, attended the event on the Friday evening and some of them who didn't and they're looking to see maybe if a stakeholder's meeting could be arranged maybe over the next few months in advance of the next one, to have a discussion around how that particular evening can be run and how it can be maybe improved in terms of how that's done. And they're very much welcome the fact that it takes place, but just maybe to have a discussion as a representative group of parents around that. And the second issue is around the coastal ocean in Port Ram, look, there's a request for maybe an urgent deputation between the councillors, five local area councillors, the council officials and RPS to get an update on where things are at with the further emergency interim works, longer term scheme, as is worried things are going to drift in the autumn and the winter when the storm damage and the risk to homes and businesses will worsen, so just a request for an urgent deputation meeting, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you councillor, councillor Butler, please.
Yeah, no, thank you very much. Yeah, no, the signing was great news for Swords, so brilliant to see that, thank you very much. I would ask if there's any way we can reduce to two years the road is closed for Seaton Road, great, but it's great news for Swords to see those projects progressing. Just to thank all the staff, number of projects, obviously everyone who worked at the count centre for their professionalism over the long two, three days, I think I went into, so fair play to them all. Flavours of Fingal, absolutely brilliant, I must say. Even on Saturday morning with the rain, I must say, I went up there on Saturday and Sunday, but Saturday with my six year old, I'd say it was, even in the rain was probably the best five hours we've had going round together, we had, we had a brilliant time and it was fantastic and thank you everyone for that. Yeah, also the concerts, well done on everything you did there. Everything Fingal County Council did was extremely professional. I would say next year, yeah, we certainly report back that we want acts that will give value for money. We don't want acts that will turn up and do the bare minimum, flying in and out of the country, but everything we did was, everything Fingal County Council did was perfect, so listen, thank you very much for that.
Thank you councillor Butler. Councillor Hanapi, please.
Chief executive for the report, firstly I want to acknowledge the equipment, the exercise equipment that's gone into Park's Extender Estates, it's a fantastic success, really liked by the residents. I want to ask regarding HAP, why the delay where sometimes it can take up to 12 weeks for HAP to be assessed? And this can be really hard for people, especially in homeless accommodation who have found somewhere. And lastly, what is the latest update on the Snooksborough Road interchange? They've really gone way over timeline on anything that the councillors have been told, thank you.
Thank you councillor Hanapi. Councillor Walsh.
Thanks, thanks Mayor, thanks to the chief executive for the report. I suppose just first I want to just pay tribute to all the fabulous work that's been done by the operations department in Dublin 15 over the last number of months, particularly with planting, traffic calming, essential safety schemes for traffic calming and rollout of park benches. Just a couple of quick points, one to say I'm glad to see that the tender process for the cycling, the pedestrian and cycling routes, Clansilla-Damselfown and Graner Bridge-Casanock is almost complete and that a consultant is due to be appointed. I would just would like to know, is there a timeline for an initial consultation on either of those projects, particularly the pedestrian cycling route at Graner Bridge and Casanock? And secondly, just the Royal Canal Greenway, there's a detailed report on that, the Royal Canal Greenway has been at preliminary design stage now for several years and I understand from the report that it's at preliminary design stage now because a revised design is required in line with the new National Cycling Manual, so the new manual has, as it were, no doubt inadvertently, the review of that has caused a delay in the Royal Canal Greenway. So the new manual has, as it were, no doubt inadvertently, the review of that has caused a delay in the Royal Canal Greenway. So I just wanted to ask, I got a reply a couple of months back saying that it was proposed to bring forward the environmental impact assessment report for a planning application in the final quarter of this year. Is that still the situation or has the timeline for the Greenway slipped any further? Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Walsh. Councillor Kopinger, please.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a minute and a half, is it? Yeah. Okay, I just want to bring up two issues from the chief executive's report. And I think there were key issues that came up in the elections. So it's an opportunity for councillors to bring them home to the new council. The first one is in relation to affordable housing, which is listed in the report. And the affordable housing scheme, they're not affordable housing. And it's absolutely vital that the councillors bring that home. So if you take, for example, Churchfields, which is a council land bank, and we should be able to produce it much cheaper than is the case. We're talking £320,000 for your basic house, which, when I availed, before I was a councillor, 21 years ago, of a council mortgage in Castle Curragh, I was a single teacher, I was able to buy a house in Castle Curragh. Nobody can do that now under the affordable schemes. Now, I know it isn't the chief executive's prerogative how these schemes are run, but it's very important that we register that these are not working for the majority of people. We have a massive teacher shortage throughout Fingal, particularly in Blanchestown. We have a massive shortage of skilled and essential workers for care, for education, for health. And unless this is addressed, we'll continue to have those problems. And the final thing I just want to register, I won't at time, but is the Blakestown Mountview area. The absolute and utter neglect that people felt in the local elections definitely is something that this council has to grapple with. The fact that they're in a ward in Casanock where basically they don't have representation relative to what they should have and what they need. I think that's very important and that has to be looked at too.
Thank you, councillor Kopinger. Councillor Healy?
It's Coppinger, by the way, sorry.
Yeah, Coppinger. Councillor Healy?
Commissioner Devereux, I'd just like to refer to the issue of the access, the planning decision given F24A0372, which was understandably refused by the council on the basis that it didn't tie in with the adjoining development. And this is about the access from Durnai Wood to Station Road in Portmarnock. The adjoining development is a piece of land which we are buying as a built housing estate. So we've been taken to see it and it's extremely welcome. So I've been in touch and I haven't been able to get any answer from the council in relation to, can we provide the necessary approval for the connection to be made, pedestrian connection to be made from Durnai Wood through this site to get to the station? Our planning department's decision was understandable, but really it should have been lined up in the planning application that our housing department should have agreed that this access is possible through our site. And it's going to make an enormous difference to the safety of people trying to get to the train station and to the schools in Portmarnock. Thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor Healy. Councillor Humphries?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And thank you for the comprehensive report. I just have a couple of quick questions. The Fingal Skills Strategy public consultation, or public surveys on at the moment. I was kind of wondering what's the feedback and the feed-in so far? And is there any plans to kind of promote it further to get a wider kind of cross-section of society to engage in it? I'd like to commend the Fingal Sports Department, who have been, I'm certainly up to game as far as, in my view, in promoting certainly kind of minority sports. I've been seeing pickleball and netball and Barmington have kind of pop up on Facebook and promoting that through the council. Just with the Olympics on this year, is there any chance that all that could be kind of correlated into an easy, one-place kind of guide as kind of people see these new sports on TV later on this month? That there's an easy kind of access into the infrastructure that we had? It's great to see the vintage picnic back. It was also probably very disappointing for an awful lot of people how quickly the tickets got snapped up. It's probably too soon for this year, but certainly for following years. Could we look at maybe extending that into a kind of a two-day event if possible? And then there's finally just a question on the Fingal Active Travel Policy and how we kind of were prioritising walking, cycling and wheeling across the county. And I just want to know how that interacts with operations? Because we recently had to close, we had to close a bridge over the R132 because they needed repair. But the diversion is roughly a 30-minute walk, or 15-minute cycle. That's not promoting or prioritising walking, cycling and wheeling in the county. So I just want to know how that interacts, how we have set our kind of active travel policy and how does that affect kind of decisions made in practice? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ryan?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The creation and retention of jobs in Fingal kind of is obviously a very important element of what the council does, and particularly the Economic Development Department. Now, the recent announcement of the Wavens closure in Balbriggan at the end of the year. I'm just wondering, I want to ask, has the chief executive or Mr Quinn Levin had any engagement with the company either before or since? Or do you plan to have any engagement with the company in terms of to see if the decision can be reviewed or reversed? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Gray.
Thanks, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say, well done on the way you're handling the meeting. You're thrown in at the deep end and well done. Just a couple of things that I want to do. First of all, the Flavours and concerts and the directors and all are involved. I think we couldn't mention, they were a brilliant success. But the team down there as well, led by Paul Barnes and others, that has to be recognised. He gives 24/7 whenever it's needed. Nothing is ever too much for him. And I think we're very lucky in Fingal to have him as part of that team. The other thing that I wanted to mention was in relation to the elections. And I want to pay particular thanks to Director Mary Egan. I mean, the cooperation that all her team gave, the help all her staff gave in the run-up to the election, any queries we had in handling panic-stricken individuals at the count and then in offering help in the aftermath. I just think we have to recognise the wonderful work that was done there by Mary and her team. So thanks for that. And the last thing then, on a more difficult note is, are we getting any further with the hybrid proposals for the council meetings? Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Gray. Councillor Mulligan?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. I put in motion under the CE report, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, I only put it in the last few minutes. But while I'm speaking for my 90 seconds, I would like to thank the team for all the work done over the election count and all the staff who worked hard over the weekends and in the centres. And I just want to thank the events team for Flavours of Fingal. The one point that has been mentioned to me regarding Flavours is the wifi worked great for the card machines, but a lot of people said that signal on phones and contacting friends, family and relatives on site was quite difficult. I know that's an ongoing issue in the peninsula and the area, but just to put it on the record, it's not to take away from what was a fantastic event. I attended myself on the Sunday. And just a few points of clarification on the, yeah, just, I can take the message aside of this meeting. Just if you could come back to me on the motion, please. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mulligan, and thanks for the comments on the CE's report. Just to mention that your emergency motion is not referenced. Well. No, it's not relevant to the CE's report, so unfortunately that is not being considered for a response. But it's not referenced in the CE's report, so unfortunately we couldn't take it in that context, unfortunately. So it's still ruled out of order. Thank you. Before the CE response and the managers and team, I'd also like to echo the fantastic comments that we've heard about events over the weekend, especially Flavours of Fingal, Mixed Town Community Family Day, the Casanock Festival. And of course, you know, I know lots of colleagues here played excellent roles. I won't really go into mentioning names, but I think most importantly, we must acknowledge, you know, the big role played by staff of Fingal County Council in delivering these fantastic events, especially during the summer. Also bearing in mind, not every family is able to go away where the sun shines or maybe even to pay for some of these events, you know, outside of the country. So being able to deliver them locally, I think it's a credit to Fingal County Council and we must acknowledge that. I would also like to join my colleague councillor Hanapi to raise the question on Snowborough Interchange. It's a major concern to residents of Dublin 15, you know, and I know the date has been pushed forward and again and again. So I think it's very important that we get some clarity on when that project is going to be done. We can see the work going on there, but you know, the deadline has been pushed forward and again and again. So just to mention this couple and to thank the staff of Fingal County Council for all the hard work they do. Thank you. Sorry, I thought I was drawing a, we have councillor Howie. Councillor Howie, please.
Yeah, just to follow on what councillor Darby were saying, the Malahide Castle gigs were absolutely brilliant and Fingal County Council played an absolute blinder. But I think the Nicky Minaj concert was an absolute farce, nothing to do with Fingal County Council. But if maybe we could have a look into, I know a lot of people are asking for refunds with the promoters or Ticketmaster, which I don't think is going to be possible. But I know on the night there wasn't much that we'd done about it, but it's an artist who has a history of pulling out. I think she pulled out of her last Dublin gig as well. So if it's just something that could be reviewed going forward, what artists show up on time and give a good performance. But other than that, they were brilliant, so thanks.
Thank you, councillor Howie. Councillor Kelly?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I put a motion in last week and I don't see it on the agenda today. And I'm just wondering if you can check that up and follow that up? That's just what I have to say. Thank you.
That's not it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor and members, and thanks for your comments about the events. And just to acknowledge the difficulty of a June month is that we have lots of successful events and it does mean that there's quite a draw on individual staff members. So just to thank them for taking care of those events right through the month. I note some comments in relation to Flavours of Fingal, stakeholder reviews, the special event on the Friday, the wifi. So all of that will be reviewed in a post-event review in the coming weeks and months. And where we can improve, we will. And just to mention the fact that a mast was brought in to Flavours of Fingal to improve the wifi. So if it didn't do that adequately, we will certainly review that again. But I did get good positive feedback on the payment system, which was important for the businesses that helped us make that event successful. I don't think it's appropriate to go into an individual concert and the issues associated with it are reported. There's some factual reporting and some less than factual. But I do want to acknowledge our own director of services and the head of events, who reacted quite quickly on Saturday, including making contact with myself, just in terms of just making sure the best value was offered to the concert goers on that night. So we will, as always, have a post-event review with the promoters. And should they be looking at next year, you know, any of the issues that arose this year would be fed into that process. So I think that's enough to say on that issue for now. Just generally, to deal with councillor Coppinger's point on affordable housing, we thrive for affordability at all times and we deal with that on a house-by-house, site-by-site basis, looking to get the best value that will deliver the best price for the end purchaser. Just to highlight in the case of Churchfields that was mentioned, 180 homes for sale, 461 applicants to date. And just to mention that the minimum price of those units is a two-bedroom terrace, £263,000 and a three-bedroom terrace, £315,000. The price relates to the income then of the successful purchasers. We thrive to make them as affordable as possible and certainly in terms of our pre-investment on that particular site, that has helped to deliver that affordability. But again, we'll continue to do that with new sites as we bring them to the market. And we deal with the planning, the design, the enabling works and the construction in that manner. And what we found quite successful in recent times has been the carrying out of the enabling works in advance of the contract. That's evident in the likes of Seaton Road, where that site is now ready for the construction of the housing because the enabling works has been ongoing for the past number of months. So yeah, more to do in that space, but I'm pleased that we have delivered some success with the affordability in the county. The issue of the HAP and the housing assistance payment for councillor Hanapi, we'll certainly follow through in case there's any undue delay. It's a really big priority for us to have those applications processed quickly. And I know our new online service has helped us achieve that. So if there's any issue, we'll be following up on that. I think most of the rest are individual issues that the directors can address. Might start with Mr Storey?
Thanks, chief exec. Councillor Doyle just raised Clonie to Blanchestown. So the options report is being worked on at the moment, should be finished in quarter three or quarter four. There'll be a meeting with the NTA and then a detailed design process in 2025. Now, obviously then to tender after that, so construction will probably be late 2025 or early 2026, subject to the finance from the NTA. Castle Knock to Blanchestown consultants, councillor Walsh. The consultants will be appointed in Q3 2024. And then just in relation to councillor Humphries, I think he mentioned just about sports. There is a monthly sports newsletter that's issued to all councillors and that's been happening since February online. So if you're not getting that, maybe just let us know. But it was, it is issued to all councillors. Thank you.
Just a number there. Councillor Doyle, just in relation to the Clonsilla framework plan, that'll be published in September. We start survey work on the Old Schoolhouse next week. And we'll have the pre-draft consultation will be launched in the next six weeks. We're obviously just cognizant of the time of year, so we'll work with the members to make sure that we reach as many people as possible. Councillor Mulville, just in relation to coastal erosion of Portran, we'd be happy to organise a new or liaison committee meeting in the coming weeks and just give you a full update on the MAC, the Marine Area Consent Application, the progress been made and the timelines associated with that. There were a number of queries just on the Snowborough Road. So you're probably aware, there was a major water main burst in close proximity to the site in April. We've been working very closely with Irscairn to reach a solution to provide for the upgrade of the water main and to secure the continued high quality and reliable supply to Blanchestown and the surrounding area. Unfortunately, that's had an impact on our own project at the lower level, just due to the complexity of the site. So look, we'll come back to you in September with a timeline, a definitive timeline for when we hope to close out that scheme. And finally then, just councillor Walsh had a query there on the Royal Canal. We are continuing to work towards a Q4 submission date. It may slip into early next year, but we're doing everything we can to make sure we lodge an application to the board as quickly as possible. And we'll bring you an update on that and the Granar Bridge in September, October.
Councillor Ryan, I neglected to come in on the issue about Wavens in Balbriggan. And I was very disappointed to hear that news last week. We have sought a meeting, it's yet to be arranged, but we'll be hopeful that that meeting will happen soon.
In relation to hybrid meetings, councillor Gairon, I am proposing to discuss that at the OPNF meeting in September with all the members, who will bring a report then.
Okay, thank you, member. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, just councillor McCamley, you asked about the enterprise centres. It's a little bit complex, so I'd be happy to...
It's a little bit complex, so I'd be happy to talk to you afterwards as well. Any members who wish to ask any questions about it, please feel free to contact me, and I'll explain it. Just as regards the members who have been nominated to those, the boards of those companies, we will be bringing you all into a meeting to discuss an update on what's happening with it over the next week or two. Councillor Humphries, you asked about the skills strategy. No feedback as yet from the surveys open until midnight tonight. So we'd encourage you to just reach out to your networks again and ask for as much input as we can get. But we're not just simply relying on a survey, we're reaching out directly to employers and trade unions as well to try and get as extensive an engagement as we can on that review.
Councillor Torme, with regards to the traffic calming and investment in 2025, in the countywide investment. With regards to the speed limits at the end of November, by the end of November, the 80 kph will be defaulting to 260. But as we move into the next phase, which is the 30 kph in the villages, that will certainly require additional investment with regards to traffic calming. So the budget will be coming before the members, the revenue budget and your work programme will also be coming before the members for next year. Councillor Humphries, yes, we had to close the bridge at Listen Hall, and it was essential that the works were done. We tried to accommodate Fingalings as best we can, and it worked out very well. And from the works that the contractor has carried out at Listen Hall, we have found a way of, we're moving on to the next two bridges, of hoping that we won't have to close the next two bridges. Unfortunately, the diversion is the diversion, that is the safest route for pedestrians, and we have to advise of the safest route. But we did look, I can assure you, at all options, and the works were completed within the week, so the bridge is back open. I think that's all from me, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. To the C and the managers, councillor Queensland, I see you want to come in. Yeah.
Just apologies, I'm only really getting up to speed here on what's actually going on. It's like, there was a council that had an opportunity there to ask questions, and obviously the questions are being answered. I just have a question. So there was a total, just in going back to the chief executive's report, there was a total allocation of social housing. When in Fingal County Council, I'm reading 391 total allocations. I'm seeing there was allocations from Fingal County Council and approved housing bodies. I'm wondering, would it be possible to get a demographic breakdown of who received those houses? Then as well, in relation to Tarnton Hall, planned direct provisions sent are just on the edge of the constituency, far away but not forgotten. I would just like to request that, essentially, just to really summarise it, any further update in relation to the detailed plan of proposed development, including therein a timeline for the movement of asylum seeker slash OIPAS applicants onto the South Central. I'm asking there is, do we have an exact date or timeframe when people are actually scheduled to move in? And yeah, I think that's essentially it there for the moment. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Queensland. I'll take those for you. There's no further update in relation to Tarnton Hall since the briefing note was sent out to all the councillors. And if something else comes up, we'll let everyone know. On the breakdown of lettings, I can have a chat with you about what exactly you're looking for there, and see if I can provide that for you.
Okay, thank you, members, and thanks to the C and managers. So moving on swiftly, item number 23, mayor's business. There is no business to deal with at the moment. I suppose the mayor's condition is in our thoughts and prayers at the moment. So item number 24, conference report. 24A MacGill Summer School 2024, Glenties, County Donegal, on the 18th to 20th of July 2024. Noted? Okay. And 24B AILG Induction Training Programme for Elected Members Post-June Local Elections. Noted? 25 Correspondence, Letter from Clare County Council dated 14th May 2024, Reconfiguration to Health Services. Noted? Letter from Monaghan County Council dated 15th May 2024, Free Education Scheme. Noted? Letter from Wicklow County Council dated 20th May 2024, Reemployment of Full-Time Road Safety Officer. Noted? Letter from Tipperary County Council dated 21st May, Review of Support for Farmers Impacted by Ash Dieback. Noted? Letter from Limerick County Council dated 4th June 2024, Allow Taxpayers One Week Where No Taxes Paid in Line With Social Welfare Recipients. Noted? Departmental and Ministerial Correspondence, Letter from Senator Robbie Gallagher, dated 9th May 2024, thanking all elected representatives for their work on behalf of local communities. Noted? Okay, happy to know we are in motions, statutory functions. Item number 27, councillor Borchell. Proposed? Yep. Seconded? Please go ahead.
We're living in a pivotal and very disturbing moment in history. Every day for nine months now, we've watched war crimes heaped upon atrocity in Palestine. Nobody can credibly claim that they didn't know that the Gaza genocide and ethnic cleansing is happening, because it's been livestreamed by the Palestinian victims, and in many cases, by the Israeli military perpetrators. Aided and abetted and armed by Western governments, including the US, UK, Germany and France, the Israeli state has engaged in the industrial slaughter of a civilian population imprisoned in an extended concentration camp. Starvation, disease, torture and rape have all been systematically deployed to try and break the bodies, minds and spirits of the Palestinians. Israel and the Western governments have turned Gaza into human abattoir. 38,000 is the official death toll, but the actual figure is multiples of this. 21,000 children are missing under the rubble of their homes, schools, hospitals and refugee camps. The Lancet Medical Journal over the weekend estimated the death toll at 186,000. The list of horrors is too long to recount now, but the image of a beautiful young girl with her lower jaw ripped from her face in an Israeli strike a few days ago is one I will never forget. When history is written, it remembers those who took a stand, often at great personal risk against the horrors inflicted by the powerful against the innocent. And the Gaza genocide is one of the worst crimes against humanity ever witnessed. We should look to the great examples set by the Trinity students and activists whose magnificent occupation forced the authorities there to divest from Israeli organisations and institutions complicit in the genocide. History does not judge kindly those who hide behind the letter of the law, most especially when those laws are written by the perpetrators of the war crimes and atrocities. In this case, the EU procurement regulations, the same EU whose senior bureaucrats, including Von der Leyen, are supportive of and complicit in the genocide. Let us remember also that much more senior courts than those of the EU have ruled against Israel. The ICC have found a case of plausible genocide, and the ICJ have issued arrest warrants for Netanyahu and Gallant, his minister for defence. Let us also remember that some of the greatest atrocities of the past have been deemed legal by those who committed them, while most, if not all, of the progress that humanity has made has been won in defiance of the law, including civil rights for minorities, women's rights, workers and trade union rights, LGBTQ rights, voting rights, et cetera. So the law is a very flimsy curtain to hide behind when great crimes against humanity are taking place. And if the law is forcing us to do business with corporations who are assisting in and profiting from an ongoing genocide, then that law must be challenged. I'll be finished very shortly. So I would call on the councillors to support this motion as a matter of profound justice, which must take priority over EU procurement directives. Economic operators participating in a genocide should be discriminated against and made to pay a price for their profiteering on the savage subjugation of the Palestinian people and the deaths of 150,000-plus civilians.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councillor Donnelly?
Thank you. I'd like to support this motion. Sinn Féin at the moment, their bill to the Illegal Israeli Settlements Divestment Bill is being blocked in the Dáil. The situation in Gaza is one of just pure horror. As of yesterday, there was 38,153 people killed, and that's confirmed. The Lancet warned that the true death toll could be close to 190,000 people, men, women and children. Hundreds of thousands of people have been deprived of shelter, food, medicine and clean water, the very basics that we need to survive. And as recently as the past 24 hours, 40 people have been killed. A couple of days ago, 16 people were killed in an Israeli airstrike on a UN-run school. 35% of the buildings have been destroyed. And despite all of this, Israel approved a new illegal settlement four days ago. It's like, this is the past few days. So we've been watching this horror played out on our television screens for the past 10 months, and this is still happening. It's continuing day in and day out, and it really is just unbelievable that we are actually watching it in real time. The new illegal settlement has been approved for 5,295 new housing units. The Israeli Finance Minister threatened to expand settlements in response to countries choosing to officially recognise the state of Palestine. So that's what we're up against. So I think anything we can do... And it does feel like we're doing very little. We're talking the talk, but in real terms, we're not really doing an awful lot to help those people. So anything we can do has to be a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Donnelly, councillor Coppinger?
Thanks, mayor. I think this is a really critical motion, and I think it's appropriate that it's the first motion of the new council, because this is the biggest, well, one of the biggest, there's genocides taking place in many parts of the world, but certainly what's happening in Gaza is really high in the minds of everyone. I'm sure we all experienced it in the local elections as well. The Lancet figure of 186,000 deaths has been mentioned. It isn't just the direct killing, it's also, it's estimated to be about 8% of the population of Gaza has been killed. And I think it's incumbent on us as elected representatives for people in this area and in general in society to take a stand. We can't have a business-as-usual setup when we're faced with something like this, and there is something that we can do. So we have to divest from any companies that are connected directly to the Israeli military and intelligence and HP. And HPE is very closely involved in the Israeli navy, in the Israeli Basel system, in helping the Israelis to carry out illegal settlements, in biometric identification of the occupied people of Palestine. So it's really high on the list of companies that should be divested. Unfortunately, the councillor's laptops had already been commissioned, but from here on in, we can take a stand. I want to refer to what the chief executive has said. I think the response is what you would expect, but we're in a very unusual situation. But even the directive that you cite on procurement does have a section, section four, which allows companies to be offloaded or divested if they show, quote, "grave professional misconduct which renders its integrity questionable." So we actually do have an ethical out, and we can argue that legally. But most importantly, the elected councillors need to give strength to the management of the council to take this on by fully getting behind this motion.
Thank you.
And doing it on behalf of the diverse population of Dublin Fingal in general.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Coppinger. Councillor Guerin?
I think what we are witnessing in Gaza is one of the worst atrocities certainly in my lifetime. I think it's awful. I think it's terrible. I think those responsible, the Israelis, should be punished. So therefore, if I speak against this motion, it doesn't mean that I'm condoning any of the atrocities or the horrible events that we're witnessing on a daily basis. We're calling for HP, Hewley Packard to be punished. We're looking for something to be passed in the motion, which is not in our gift, because we are obliged to operate within the directives that are given down to us and the laws that are there. If we don't like Hewley Packard, if we have such a protest, close your laptop and hand it back. But let's not try and deviate and make scapegoats for the sake of highlighting the issue. We all agree, it's horrible. The Israelis need to be punished. But we've also got to comply with the laws. We also are part of the EU. The EU, I don't think, are complicit the way it's stated. I'm just nervous of a motion like this, which is asking us to disregard the procurement laws, the laws that we're meant to behave under as a local authority. Punish Hewley Packard, next month it'll be Intel, next month it'll be somebody else. Let's focus on those who deserve to be punished, and that's the Israelis and maybe the Americans and so forth. But you know what? Not Hewley Packard and Intel and that. I see this as more of a stunt, to be the wrong word, because I have too much respect for councillor Borchell to believe that's the case, but I think it's misguided. And I would have even thought that the motion would have been out of order, and that it's calling on the chief executive to do something which is in breach of procurement and other laws. But my opposition to the motion does not in any mean way, anyway, mean that I condone what's going on. It's a horrible, horrible act. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Guerin. Councillor Mulligan?
Thanks, deputy mayor, and thanks to councillor Borchell for bringing forward such an important motion. I think it goes without saying, we all understand the atrocities going on in Palestine at the moment, and the genocide which has been inflicted on the population of Palestine. But to deal with the report, I don't think the report is accurate in terms of the public procurement guidelines for goods and services in Ireland. On page 133.134, exclusion grounds, terrorism, offensive corruption or fraud or allegations thereof are grounds for exclusion. And Israel as a country with these companies headed and operating from such is actually accused by the International Court of Justice on those grounds, as well as members of governments of the same country. So I think there are very much exclusion grounds if we were to look for the same under our own procurement for goods and services law within the EU directive and also Regulation 51/41, the public condition of labour law exclusion grounds. There's plenty of them there if you want to find them, but you can find information that probably counteracts what I... But we're never going to get anywhere by having a tune and frolic about labour law. We'll just eventually end up at the point that the easy decision is not to get new laptops or not to interfere with the tender process. But I think it's very important to have conversations like this. When we look at what happened in Dublin City Council in 2018, a similar motion was passed. We've seen what happened in South Africa many years ago with apartheid. It was because of people's power, it was because of boycott, divest and sanction that we had what we had in South Africa. And I think this is a very fair motion. I don't think it's disingenuous. I think it's very fair. I'm very apt to be the first motion on the agenda, and I thank councillor Borchell for bringing this forward. And I thank any colleagues who support the motion and reject the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Newman?
Thanks, mayor. It's not something I engage with all that, but I certainly, you know, given what happened on the 7th of October, it was horrific, and I totally understand there was some reaction, but there's no excuse for, you know, the killing of innocent civilians and children, which is what's happening on a daily basis. So I think what councillor Borchell is asking for is, you know, I think it's reasonable, it's a gesture. I don't know what the unintended consequences might be of, you know, refusing to buy from Hewley Packard. And then do I get back and tell you I don't know where it was made or anything like that? But I think in this instance, I can support the motion, and I think... And I think councillor Copeynger mentioned that section four allows for, you know, the purchaser to make judgements based on, you know, who they're purchasing from. I mean, if we were, if there's a couple of, you know, tenders in from companies for whatever you're purchasing, and you found out one of them was, you know, engaged in criminal behaviour, I'm sure we wouldn't have a problem with telling them, we don't want to deal with them. So I think in that instance, I think I can support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Humphreys?
Thank you, deputy mayor, and it's, thank you for bringing forward this motion. It certainly gives us the space to have a discussion, and it's an important discussion to have, because it was just in June 2022 when this chamber endorsed the Amnesty International report that kind of highlighted as Israel's apartheid against Palestinian accrual system of domination and a crime against humanity. This report was brought to us by the mayor at the time after she travelled to Israel and Palestine and came back and made this, and encouraged us to support Amnesty International's report, and this chamber did. There is, in my view, a way under procurement that the executive could have taken that into consideration. It would have taken certainly a bit of creativity, but I certainly believe it was possible because it has been done before. And thinking back to the time when there was a camera systems and it turned out that it was being produced by the Chinese government in Dublin City Council, and there was ways around doing that. So if there was a will, there's a way, and I certainly think there should be a will in this situation, because as has been mentioned before, apartheid was ended in South Africa predominantly through boycotts economically, culturally and politically. And for apartheid to end in Palestine, for any, any sort of peace that arrives at a two-state solution, there has to be international pressure put on the Israeli states, in my view, at this stage. So I fully 100% support this motion.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Humphreys. councillor Healy?
Margaret Fair, I'd like to thank councillor Burchill for bringing this motion to us. I don't agree with the advice given to us by the chief executive. I believe it's quite clear that we can take these issues into consideration in procurement. It's been well established, it's been done by other councils, it's been done at a national level in various European countries. And I think, given that we have expressed our solidarity with Palestine as a council on a number of occasions, I think it's really important that we take practical actions. It's a very small action, but it's a drop in the ocean, it's a drop wearing away a stone, and we know that these actions work, as the other councillors have said. We've seen the effects of boycotts, divestments and sanctions in the past. In other instances, they're frequently used and it's our small bit, and I think we definitely should do it. And I would hope that we could agree this motion unanimously. Margaret.
Thank you. councillor Walsh?
Thanks, deputy mayor, and yeah, I'd also like to thank councillor Burchill for bringing forward the motion. Don't know if I would have supported a motion like this a year ago or even two years ago. I've always believed in the value of dialogue and trying to change minds. But what we've witnessed in Israel and Palestine over the past two years has been the mass killing of civilians. And I think that's, I think all of the, the entire council would agree, and indeed I think we did agree in previous councils, we've passed resolutions on it, that that is utterly reprehensible and outrageous. The scale of the slaughter of innocents is simply appalling. And we have as a council, and I know most members will remember this, we have in a, you know, quite an emotional debate last year, we passed motions calling for a ceasefire and for the release, the unconditional release of hostages and for the end of the killing of civilians. I think we have to face the reality that the current Israeli government, and I think it's important to acknowledge there are forces within Israeli society which don't agree with the current Israeli government and which have dissented from the brutal and discriminatory policies of the Netanyahu government. But the current Israeli government, which has been in power in various ways for most of the past 15 years, has deliberately undermined a two-state solution, which is the only, recognised in UN resolutions as the only viable route to peace, and the Palestinian people have been subjected to an illegal occupation and systematically denied their rights over a long period. What can we do about this as a council? Well, frankly, very little. There's a very limited range of ways for us as a council to express our anger and our outrage at what's happening, or to express our solidarity with the victims of mass slaughter. I think this is one of the few ways we can do it. I'm not going to comment on the legal context, other councillors have done that, but what I would say is that in terms of the role of HP or any other company which is involved in supporting the security forces of the state of Israel, their role is not value-neutral. Those are deliberate decisions made to make profit, to make money, out of supporting the systematic oppression of the Palestinian people. And so I am willing to support the motion.
Thank you councillor Walsh. councillor Tomy?
Thank you. And similarly, I just wanted to convey that by voting against this motion, it does not mean that, you know, anyone who does vote against it does not recognise how horrific the crimes are against civilians in Gaza at the moment. And also similarly as well to recognise, you know, the victims, our Israeli victims of the past as well. I think this motion is very, very clear, the report to it, that in supporting it would be illegal. If there's a differing of opinion with regards to legal advice, you know, I think that can be thrashed out, but I think for now, this is the advice that is before us, which says that it is illegal to vote or to support this. And we would incur such fines as well in order to be doing that. And I think, you know, we can't be supporting anything that's illegal at the moment with regards to, you know, what has been done by the state. We have recognised the state of Palestine. We are very, very vocal internationally in terms of us, our morals and our values as a country and what we do not accept. And I think as well for individual members, they can make their own decisions in their own day-to-day lives. Like, I can think of examples in my personal life where I do not buy certain things, I do not listen to certain things, you know, on a moral basis. So to be reading speeches off a HP laptop, you know, it's just something my mind is struggling to get my head around at the moment. And yeah, look, that's just my position. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tomy. councillor Lady?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, look, similar to councillor Walsh, I would not have been supportive of boycotts in the past, but it is something that I'm reconsidering, given the gravity of the situation in the Middle East at present. Particularly if the targets of the boycotts are connected with settlements. But similar to councillor Tomy and councillor Guerin, I do have, I do have concerns about this, really around the issue of consistency. Look, I don't, I fully admit I don't know enough about this, but I don't know what you can say about HP that you couldn't say about many, many other companies. I mean, we have to look at what we're using in our phones, the IT systems here, the webcast. You know, I'm not quite sure where it starts and where it ends when it comes to Israeli companies. And, you know, there are reputational, you know, consequences to doing things like this, and we have to consider that. One thing that I am concerned about is other countries that we have not boycotted and in some cases actually have good relations with. We have to consider the fact that, you know, a couple of years ago, we welcomed the Premier of China here in Fingal, we welcomed him in Dublin Airport, we've actually sent a trade delegation to China. And I think we are levelling, or we are, you know, opening ourselves up to serious charges of being inconsistent when it comes to issues like this. So I'd like to just put that out there and ask members to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Queen?
I'm not surprised here, but I'd be supporting the motion. Look, I've been listening to the contributions from all of the councillors, and there's some fine points made, but we have very little powers as a local authority. Us as councils have very little powers, but some of the powers that we do have relate to this. We can send a clear message that we will not put up with genocide, we will not put up with the slaughter of innocent civilians, and we have that opportunity here. And I just think it's very, very important that we send that clear message out. There is, as councillor Copeynger says, there is an opportunity there and a section where we can actually boycott the use of certain products and certain companies and so forth. And the use of the term boycott, we have to think where it came from. I mean, we're Irish citizens here, and when we were under the occupation of the British, we boycotted the landlord system. So we should be very proud of that, and I think we need to send a clear message today that we do not support the genocide anywhere across the world. And I think it's very apt, and I have to note that, you know, the mention of the Premier of China, the last time I was on the council, we were applauding the visits from China, and we were sending councillors over to China. And when it was raised by myself and other councillors from other parties about the human rights issues, we were laughed at. So please don't come back and another term at the council and start using some kind of excuse around the Chinese to oppose this, because 10 years ago, we were supporting trips to China by councillors, and we probably will still carry on doing that. So let's allow a clear message that we do not support genocide and that we do support a two-state solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. councillor Queen? councillor Mulville?
Thanks, Chair, just to strongly support councillor Burchill's motion and to commend him for bringing it today, and, you know, it's very apt and it follows on from the other motions people have mentioned. I think the last meeting we had at the council, we agreed the motion for the boycott divestment and sanctions campaign that councillor Mulligan had put forward. So we have a good track record as a council, and certainly this is something we should support here today. The, I was struck, as others have mentioned, on Saturday at the commemoration of the Strabadi Masquerade, which took place in, commemoration took place in Blantyrestown, that the Bosnian community were very much making the link between what happened in Bosnia in the 90s and what's happening in Palestine, which is of a much greater magnitude, as they pointed out themselves. And really, they've called for all people to kind of stand up against such acts of genocide, and certainly we should support the motion here today. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Mulville. Before, yeah, okay, yeah, the manager would like to speak now.
Thanks, Mayor, yeah. So just in relation to this, like this would clearly be in breach of procurement regulations as you're acting discriminatory against a group of suppliers without any basis in law for us, and that would expose Fingal County Council to a very significant legal challenge and financial risks. So you need to be very, very mindful of that. Issues in relation to sanctions and that or competency of central government as opposed to local government. The motion itself, I mean, it's hugely broad, it doesn't just speak about laptops, it speaks about divestment from IT and other products manufactured by corporations connected to the Israeli military. So it doesn't even include a list of companies or anything like that. So this is hugely problematic from a legal point of view for Fingal County Council if it was passed by the members. Thanks.
Thank you. to the manager. councillor Burchill, do you want to come in?
So, yeah, so thanks to the councillors for their contribution. I don't think we should stop at HP, I think we should have a root and branch review of, you know, the top offenders and root them out and make them pay the price. We can see the power of economic sanctions. McDonald's, Starbucks have lost huge amounts of money from their, you know, attachment to the genocide. That was the actions of ordinary people on the ground, but they need a lead from public bodies and institutions and elected reps as well. And I'd like to give that lead today. We saw the EU impose economic sanctions against Russia when they invaded Ukraine, correctly so, and that would certainly have included eliminating Russian companies they tended for business within the EU. We hear, you know, Fine Gael paying lip service to opposing the genocide in Gaza without actually really wanting to take any action to stop it. You know, the government belatedly recognised Palestine decades after it should have happened, but the Israeli ambassador is still here, the genocide ambassador is still in her comfortable pad over there on Donnybrook. You know, a genocide ambassador of a regime that's deploying unimaginable horror against a defenceless civilian population. If we're talking about the visits of presidents, we had the US president here not too long ago, Joe Biden, who's providing 2,000-pound bombs for Israel to drop on refugee camps so that children are born alive inside tents with their parents screaming outside. So, yeah, I mean, we should absolutely call out these warmongers, these butchers, and stand up against this terrorism.
Thank you councillor Burchill.
So I'm calling for a roll call vote on this one.
Okay. Roll call vote? The details are going to come up on the screen in a short while.
Members, green is to vote in favour of the motion, red is to vote against, and yellow is to abstain. Nineteen in favour, three against, and eight to abstain.
Just to note that, as agreed, I voted here in place of the mayor, so councillor Brian McDonnell, yes, would be for me. Okay, so the motion passes. Right, and we go to the next item, item 28, councillor Boland. Breaches of planning permission, DA. Is councillor Boland here? No? Okay, so we move on to the next item, 29, councillor Walsh. Noise from M15 Motto Way.
Mayor, sorry, proposed.
Proposed. Okay, seconded?
Thanks, deputy mayor. This motion was put down during the last council, and I have, I brought it back, we didn't reach it, so I brought it back again. So I suppose just to acknowledge firstly, that the, I know the executive has already been in contact with TII about this, and a response has been received. been in contact with TII about this and a response has been received, an initial response was received from TII and I'm going to, that was sent to me, so I'm going to comment on it. But I suppose the key issue here is that local communities along the M50 have been treated with absolute contempt by TII. During the widening of the M50 and during works that have occurred in the M50, no attempt has been made at all to address their legitimate concerns about noise. Communities have suffered very serious noise pollution from the impact of the widen of the M50. When this was brought to TII's attention, TII has consistently refused to do anything about it. And I'm just quoting from the correspondence, the most recent correspondence from TII to Fingal Council, which says that the, TII has no role in the implementation of noise action plans under the regulations. And specifically in relation to the M50, the designated action planning authority is Fingal Council and all environmental noise related issues are a matter for Fingal Council. So I'd be very interested in any comments that the manager or the executive may have on TII's response, which effectively disclaims all responsibility for the management of noise anywhere, it seems to me, but certainly along the M50. Now, I just don't know where to start with the TII response, except to say we really have entered the twilight zone, when the agency responsible for works along the M50 disclaims any responsibility for noise mitigation. It's an extraordinary response and it demonstrates contempt for local residents and communities living along the route. Moreover, when Fingal Council has made attempts by attaching conditions to new developments to ensure mitigation of noise, TII has frequently opposed those, has attempted to obstruct them, and has been uncooperative in establishing them. So I think we have a very serious problem that a state agency is refusing to engage here, and that's why I brought forward the motion. I think it's, you know, I think potentially the motion could also be addressed to the minister, but certainly it's absolutely essential that the council would engage with TII here. I mean, to give you a couple of examples, just of emails I've received from residents in Laurel Lodge, a resident said that effectively she's had to close all the air vents in her house, she can't open the windows, and she has to seal up the house to protect herself and her family from the harmful effects of M50 noise. Another resident in College Gate says that the estate has no protection whatsoever in some areas against the noise of the M50. So this is a, you know, this is a really serious issue, it's really damaging to quality of life, it's damaging to the health of residents, it needs to be taken seriously by the council. So I'd be very interested in the comments of other members. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you councillor Walsh. Councillor Lady?
Thanks very much. Yeah, very much supportive of this motion, councillor Walsh covered most of it. Look, I think there really is a role here for the council in this. TII are not going to, you know, they're not going to do anything that causes them to have to spend any extra money. But there are solutions to this. I think there's a bit of a perception out there that once a major road is built, that nothing can be done afterwards to mitigate noise measures. But they can, whether it's natural sound barriers, or probably most crucially, or most simply, is that when it comes time for the roads to be resurfaced, that the kind of more expensive noise mitigating surfaces are used. Like I said, they're not going to do it themselves, but they will do it if pressure comes on them from the local authorities. And I actually think, just as an aside, Fingal should liaise with the other three Dublin local authorities, because obviously the M50 covers multiple local authorities. But this is something that really, the driving force is going to have to be the councils because others are not going to do it. And as councillor Walsh very articulately said, it really is having a very, very negative effect on the quality of life of a significant amount of people. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lady. Councillor Donnelly?
Thank you. I'd like to support councillor Walsh's motion. And absolutely, there are a lot of problems along the M50, but also along the N3 in Dublin 15. And both areas suffer quite badly from noise pollution. And just to give you an example, the WHO's LDA figure, I'll be getting a gold star now, we had a briefing here today, of what's acceptable is 53, the TII is a 60. But areas in Dublin 15, along the N3 and the M50 go up to 70 and 80. Like, that's significantly higher than an acceptable level. And we all know that noise pollution can cause health implications for people. And there are different things that can be done. And like the previous two speakers said, the TII does seem to have washed their hands of any obligation on their part to deal with this. But there are things like noise barriers, reducing the speed on these roads can have an effect to bring down the noise. But I think we really need to look at it. It's not good enough that everyone is washing their hands of it because we have quite a significant amount of residents in the areas in Dublin 15 and some other areas in Fingal that are really struggling and living with this on a daily basis. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Donnelly. Councillor Healy?
Gomorogatavera. The draft noise action plan is out to public consultation until quite recently. And the section in relation to Fingal includes a review of the last noise action plan. And it says the round three noise action plan includes an implementation plan of which the proposed principal actions were as follows. Identify priority action areas, carry out noise assessment and develop an action programme for mitigation. Implementation of cost effective noise mitigation measures and identification of quiet areas for submission to the minister. And then it says, the implementation of the round three noise action plan has not progressed any of the proposed principal actions listed above. So we have a problem really that's twofold. We have TII refusing to fail, refusing to live up to its responsibilities, but we have ourselves as a council not pressurising them properly. And I think the report is kind of an instance of that. You know, it's not enough for us to just send them on a letter to say the councillors have passed this motion. We have a role as a noise action planning authority to be coming up with the measures that they should be taking and telling them, this is what you should be doing. We should be identifying the barriers. It's all along the M50, it's along the N3 Dublin 15, it's also along the M1. Certainly in the Hoth Malhide area, Waterside is shockingly affected by noise and people are trying to live underneath it. And we should be coming up with the barriers and telling them, these are the barriers you need to be putting in. And so I would very much support the motion, but I think we need a dynamic engagement in order to protect our citizens' health. Gomorog.
Thank you. Councillor Dial?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to support the motion, councillor Walsh's motion. We've been discussing this for many years, as long as I've been in office anyway, and I know councillors previously as well, have discussed noise mitigation along the M50, but particularly along the N3, which I've brought numerous motions into local area council meetings about only a couple of months ago recently. The trees were actually cut back and it just opened up a huge amount of noise for the residents along the N3, beach fields, hunters run, pheasants run, Little Pace, who have been dealing with unbelievable noise since the day they moved in. And it is, TII, it is their responsibility. We've never actually had TII into the council chamber. I think it's something that we should be looking at, to have them in front of us as a committee here. And I do agree with previous councillors that we should have a heavier hand from us as a local authority and the chief executive to put the pressure on TII because it is TII and the minister, it is their responsibility. There is a health issue there and especially, as I said, around Little Pace, the entry. We've got a school and a number of residential areas who are listening to this, the noise pollution for many, many years and have been lobbying, public representatives like myself and others for many years to put some sound barriers or some type of noise mitigation along that, along that route. And it's just not happening and it's simply not good enough. You know, it is a health issue with families and young children and we really need a heavier hand as a local authority with TII and the minister as well. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dial. Councillor Queen?
Yeah, I'd also support the motion. I can recall 10 years ago or less, bringing a case of noise pollution from the M1 at Tubistu Lane in Balskaden, and the response from TII was not up to scratch. I just think that us as a council, we need to, as councillor Dial has said there, we need to up our game there, we need to apply pressure on TII. And the suggestion from councillor Dial there, that to come in and address the councillors is a very good suggestion. And I think we should, we should look for that to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Coppins?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just very briefly, I obviously support this motion and I think the response is extremely disappointing. It's so non-committal and so passive to say we'll write a letter to the transport, the TII. When I was on the council, which was over 10 years ago, we had a severe problem which others have referred to along Little Pace. And it took the construction of the, what's now the M3 in order to get any relief for residents along there. The council should be insisting on things like noise reduction surfaces, that is, you know, we should have the highest premium noise reduction surfaces. The difference when you're driving along, along the M3, when you reach a stretch where they have put in the surfaces, some of these things are extremely simple and we're only talking about money here. Now, these are massive road projects, they're multi, multi-million projects. The least that can be done is to save residents from, you know, the harmful effects of noise. So people in Castle Lock and Blanchardstown were failed by the M50 and this council owes us now to insist that there is noise abatement for residents there.
Thank you councillor Coppins. Councillor Newman?
Thanks, Mayor. Just, look, it's grand centre on a layer, but I don't think it's going to do anything till the truth. I think, you know, the council themselves have responsibilities for, you know, ensuring that there are noise mitigation measures or insulation or some sort of this game to prevent noise. I do remember in 2016, development planning, I think it was, I raised a point following a motion from, I think it was councillor Rodrigo Gorman at the time, about the very same thing that before was here today, and that's 2014, 2016. And I raised a point about Liston Hall here, when we're going building up there, which is very close to the M1, that we do take action to make sure there is noise mitigation measures in place. I don't know where we are now, if we got back into the most recent development plan, but it is a responsibility, our responsibility, the council's responsibility to ensure that when we are doing developments, that these, you know, measures are put in place to, you know, try and offset the noise. Obviously, road surface has a big issue there as well. I taught myself that maybe electric cars might get rid of some of the noise, but Mr. Daly kind of explained that one away and says, you know, in a moral way, you don't really hear noise from the petrol or diesel engines. I don't know, I don't know how that one comes about, but we'll dig into that a bit more later on. But I just, yeah, I agree with the motion, but I don't think it's going to go anywhere. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councillor Mulligan?
Thanks, deputy mayor, and thanks councillor Walsh for bringing this forward. It's very disappointing. I know anyone who's contacted TII relating to noise monitoring will get usually very disappointing responses, mainly because they display on their website that their monitoring are not based on noise measurements but have been prepared using computer modelling in line with a common noise assessment methodology adopted by the European Commission. So they don't actually, unlike Fingal, which on national roads were procured to take out actual noise monitoring, the TII do computer modelling, essentially assessments without actual noise monitoring in such locations. So it's very disappointing. And I'd be more inclined to, you know, if councillors and representatives and residents with more planning enforcement issues, because that's the only thing, the planning guidelines and environmental guidelines that govern TII are something that they've only ever responded to me with respect to. So I think that would be a really good line to go with because unfortunately, this letter that would be sent is only playing lip service to something that they've quite evidently said that they have no responsibility for, which is very frustrating. And I think they've set a precedent by saying that they're not carrying out measurements themselves, but they have credited the local authorities in the various parts of the county and country for their own data that they provided to TII, which they use on their respective websites for all national and rural roads, but not for the motorways. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mulligan. I would like to join fellow councillors to support this motion. Again, similar to a few comments, I've raised, I think, probably a couple of times at our local area meeting in relation to noise pollution, especially on M3 and M50. And, you know, all the points are really taken and I don't think any is, there is no exaggeration here. And I think it's really very important that we get, you know, a more stronger outcome from these motions being raised. The, I know the last time I raised it, we got something similar to this that will be right in the TII. However, you know, similar responses have been received over time and we really haven't received, I mean, there's been nothing really concrete. So I support this motion and looking forward to getting a better outcome this time around. But I suppose the CE has something to say on this.
Members, I just wanted to remind you that I'm on the board of TII, so I am somewhat conflicted and all matters will be dealt with by Mr. Storey.
Members, just to be clear, the position of TII is not acceptable in relation to this issue. The four Dublin local authorities have written to TII and have all received the same response that councillor Walsh has referred to. The new noise action plan 24 to 28 has just been completed and out to public consultation. And we've identified primary action areas that we have to put in place mitigation measures over the next number of years. The four Dublin local authorities are looking to engage directly with TII and the department to resolve the issues and identify funding. Councillor Coppins has raised the issue over funding and the issue seems to be, obviously, we're the roads authority, but they're maintaining the roads and there's a breakdown there because obviously if they're maintaining the roads, they should be able to carry out the measures. So we will be engaged in the four Dublin local authorities have asked to meet them directly and try and resolve the issues around funding once we identify the actions that are required in the recently completed noise action plan. And once we have those reporting, that we'll come back to the members and give them a further update on that. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, manager. And councillor Walsh, would you like to come back in?
Firstly, I would like to thank all the members who contributed to the debate for their, you know, supportive comments. And I would like to thank Mr. Storey. I think, you know, I think that's, you know, a very useful response and definitely a step in the right direction. I suppose we can't be in a situation where nobody is responsible for noise on the M50 or indeed the N3 or other major roads and where there's a kind of game of pass the parcel where TII says it's the council and there's no effective action taken. So, you know, welcome what Mr. Storey has said, that there's engagement with the other local authorities. I hadn't put this in the motion because I was advised to return it into a non-statutory motion and it could be consigned to Siberia and would never come up again. But I think it would be beneficial to engage with the department and indeed the minister for transport on this because I think it's only through national government that TII will take a more reasonable position. So, you know, just very much welcome the debate. I would just highlight the urgency of it again. I realise time is restricted. I mean, I, five years ago, I mean, councillor, I understand councillor Newman's pessimism. Five years ago, I sat in a house in Laurel Lodge with the resident, I think there was councillor O'Gorman, then councillor O'Gorman was the other representative there, and the house was fully sealed up, windows, no air conditioning, air purifiers on full blast to try and just deal with the impact of the M50. And that's just a totally unacceptable situation for anybody to be in. So with the agreement to the meeting, I'd like to agree the motion.
Agreed. Okay, agreed. All right, motion agreed. Moving on quickly, councillor O'Leary called to.
Councillor O'Leary had to send his apologies today, so it's going to be proposed by councillor Corkery.
Okay, yeah. Is that agreed? Who is proposing? Oh, okay. All right. Please go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. So just to start off, so first of all, of all housing units commenced in the first six months of 2024, 3,321 of those were in the Fingal County Council area. And I believe that's the third highest in the entire country after Dublin City and Cork. So I would see that as a sure sign that we are making progress on top of the fact that we're also on course to meet our housing targets on a national basis too. And look, we all know the crucial role that local authorities play in getting new social and affordable homes built across our county. And look, I'll be the first person. And look, I'll be the first person to stand up and say that. It's something that I've been calling for over the course of the past year. It was a central tenet of my, of my local election campaign. And look, now, and thank you for this, we now have what I think might be the most ambitious affordable housing scheme ever built by Fingal County Council. And you can correct me if I'm wrong there, but that's two hundred and seventy four new homes due to be delivered on the Rapide Road and coming soon. So that's the kind of ambition we need, as far as I'm concerned. And I fully concur with the positive tone of councillor O'Leary's motion here. Look, I'm not here to shout from the sidelines. I was, I was elected here by the people of Swords to get things done on what I see to be the most important issue of our time in this country at least. And as the youngest member of this council, I feel a certain responsibility to, you know, speak up for the need for more access to homeownership, not just for my own generation, but for all in Fingal. So I think we do need more ambition across the board when it comes to housing delivery, be it by Fingal, be it by the market, be it by the L D A, be it by approved housing bodies through whatever means necessary. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, our job as councillors is to do everything that we can to ramp up construction in Fingal. And I'd ask you to support this, this motion, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Newman?
Thanks, Mayor. I may not be the youngest member in the council, might even be the oldest, but I certainly feel I have been put into the housing situation as well. And I'd like to thank the chief executive and all of the executive for the work they've done over a number of years and continuing to, you know, build homes and to encourage people to build homes and everything that they've done. You know, it was probably, I do remember a Fingale TD coming in here once and said you have the housing crisis solved within a few months, but here we are, probably ten, twelve years later in the same situation. But I have to say, I believe that Fingal have done great work and have really provided plenty of land for housing. I mean, I was here when we supported the Ballymore Stone, to sell up the land there to create more housing. So I think they've been proactive in that regard. But it's very important that when we're rezoning land, that we do it in a sustainable way. And we don't just rezone land for, to align developers' pockets or landowners for vested interests. So I'd just like to say, as we go and as we look for more land, that we keep that in mind. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Newman. The manager, please.
We can just agree the motion, Chair.
Sorry?
We can just agree the motion.
Oh, if, if, I've just, councillor Tommy, do you want to come in?
Yeah, my understanding in relation to standing orders is in councillor O'Leary's absence. We could get somebody else to propose it, but we have to accept the report. Otherwise, we obviously can agree the motion if that's.
Okay, that's, obviously, that's, that's up to you. Do you want the motion agreed? Yeah, okay, so agreed? Okay, yeah, agreed. All right, thank you. Item number thirty one, councillor Coppinger, delivery of social and affordable housing. Propose?
So, thanks, Mayor. So obviously.
Sorry, who is proposing and who is secondly? Okay.
I go ahead.
Yeah, please do.
This is obviously the biggest, most important issue facing this country, which is the housing crisis. It's having a massive impact for over a decade now. And it's seeping into absolutely everything, including provision of services, health services, education, care, et cetera. So the points that I'm raising are about what this council can and should be doing to address the misery that people are feeling. I'm sure I'm no different to other councillors. I've got some of the most harrowing accounts of people in emergency accommodation, at least three people. Some of them, I have to say, with a trigger warning suicidal ideation with what they're experiencing. There's sixty one families that are registered as homeless in Dublin fifteen, but that's a drop in the ocean. That's just, you know, registered. But beyond those who are experiencing homelessness, we're also talking about people in massive overcrowding. But we're also talking about essential workers and workers in this country who are being completely priced out of the so-called housing market. And throughout the election campaign, many of us would have met, you know, we had twenty somethings and thirty somethings stuck in the proverbial, you know, bedrooms, et cetera. A comment was made by a twenty three year old nursing student to me that you will not see anyone over twenty three in Casenock because young Casenock is in Australia. And that's what's facing us. That's what's facing young people in this country. And this local authority has a role to play. So just in the time that I've left, this motion focuses on the council's rate of home building and on the council's land banks. And the council's record, to be honest, hasn't been great. I mean, you can talk about welcoming developments, we all do. But for example, in the Dublin fifteen area where I'm representing, Fingal County Council directly built in five years, two hundred and twenty eight houses. Now, I know there was a pandemic, we're all well aware of that. But yes, houses are shooting up from, you know, high rise, privately owned from investment funds, voucher funds, et cetera. But even amongst what the council built, already in the first quarter of this twenty twenty four, there was no direct build housing taking place. We're acquiring or we're getting from cavern cast three times more than we're building. So I want the council to bring forward a plan to develop its own land banks. For example, in Dublin fifteen, Churchfields in Damless Town, first highlighted that in twenty seventeen. And there's been sixty odd, sixty seven houses built. I know there's more coming, but that's far too slow for what the problem is. There's also a massive land bank in Scribbles Town, which is a hundred and twenty hectares that thousands of houses could be built. I raised this in my meeting with the chief executive. She assured me that it will be looked at, but it's down as long term. We need these to be made short and medium term because we could provide, obviously with parks and other facilities, thousands of affordable homes for workers, for young people to, you know, to deal with the housing, the teaching crisis, the nursing crisis, and all of the other crises that we're facing. So I want to see massive, you know, prioritising of our council's land banks.
Thank you. Councillor Lady?
Thank you. Yeah, look, I'll be blunt here. I think this is a purely worded motion, because all it calls to do is to do things faster. And that's something that we all obviously want. You know, the motion calls for us to increase the pace of the delivery of housing and it calls for us to fast track housing. But what it doesn't say or what it doesn't address is the issues which cause delays. We all agree that the provision of housing is slow and frustrating. But what I'd like to hear from councillor Coppinger and our party is, you know, what do they think should be done to make it happen quicker? Should we get rid of the requirement for environmental impact assessments for any unit or any development above three hundred units? Should we get rid of the very strict laws that we have around tendering and public procurement? Should we get rid of public consultations and part eight planning? Because these are the things, these are the processes and procedures that we have to go through to deliver good quality housing. And if it is the view of her party that some of those things should be scrapped or done away with, she should say that. But just coming out and saying do it faster is just a, just a platitude. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Lady. councillor Mulligan?
Thanks, deputy mayor, and thanks councillor Coppinger for coming in and bringing this motion forward. And I, what I wanted to say and what I'm going to say has changed now because of councillor Lady's contribution. I think the council actually have within its own arsenal the resources to have a massive impact in terms of procurement, development and participation in the housing market within Fingal. We have amazing county architects. We have the option to do the same thing that developers do, which is subcontract out to small and medium sized builders, which every developer in the country does. Developers don't build houses, they're subcontracted, medium and small builders build and they take the so-called risk. We have within this council's arsenal the facility, the capacity to do that on our own land banks if we so wish. It is not the done thing at this moment in time, it hasn't been the done thing in quite some time, but we definitely have the capacity to do it. In terms of environmental impact assessments, procurement and public consultation, how many times have we argued, councillor Lady as well, about developers and other S H T projects and other projects that, in this county, that we argued over public consultation because there was local area plans, master plans or other amenable plans that this council brought forward that were overruled, overturned or overlooked by private developers or voucher funds? We have within the capacity of this council to provide very effective, very well costed, clear public consultation projects in a timely manner, because we have local area plans, we have master plans and we have the foresight to do it. It's just about the willingness and tendering of staff in order to make such a vast, vast scale project viable. But I think it's unfair to say that this council doesn't have the expertise, because the staff on the ground most definitely do. And I think it's about willingness. So I would refute councillor Lady's point in relation to councillor Coppinger's motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mulligan. councillor O'Donoghue?
Thanks, Mayor. I think we'd all be quite happy with fast tracking. What I'd like to know is what means the motion is suggesting that we deliver extra units? Any measures to streamline zoning, planning, procurement, consultation? Environmental reports, off the top of my head, would have to come probably from central government. Like you have this section one, seven nines. We are acquiring land for social and affordable, certainly in the North County. And the department in Fingal is working its socks off to hit its targets as best as we possibly can. The council know what land it owns. We've just gone through the development plan, it's mapped out. And it's using the levers that we have to provide housing. But there's nothing specifically in that motion to state how we're going to fast track provision. I have to assume that we simply don't have the competencies at local government level to do this. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Butchel.
Thanks, Mayor. Councillor Lady is pointing the finger at the planning process for the slow delivery of housing and the housing crisis. No, that's not the cause of it. The cause of it is the commodification of housing over decades, an ideological decision taken. The states stopped building social and affordable housing in significant numbers, you know, decades ago and threw everything out to the market. And we've exactly the same crisis that we see in Britain and the States. You know, very rich countries with catastrophic housing crisis, exactly the same as here. It's deliberate. It makes the profiteering class, the speculator class, very rich on the backs of ordinary people trying to put a roof over their heads. So we're agreed that we need more housing built. We want the state and the councils to build, directly build, social and affordable housing. Should establish a state construction utility, possibly through the councils. That used to be the case, you know, many decades ago. And now we pretend that the state is incapable of doing this. It's a nonsense, of course. The state is far better placed than the private sector to do this. The other thing we're not in agreement on is, you know, I don't believe the government parties want to end the housing crisis, you know, they deliberately engineered it. Many of them are profiting from it, including councillor Lady as a landlord with thirteen properties that he forgot to declare once upon a time. So, yeah, we're not in agreement about this stuff. These parties represent the rich, they represent landlords, developers, voucher funds, speculators of all kinds. We represent working class people trying to put affordable roofs over their heads. So we're in fundamental disagreement about the roots of this housing crisis and the way forward. Thanks.
Thank you. May I just call attention that we, obviously, you know, no, no direct reference to anybody. So, you know, we have read out the guidelines at the start. So I would like us to call caution to maybe making direct reference to any member while we are trying to make our case. That's a general statement. councillor Walsh, please.
Thanks, deputy mayor, and, you know, appreciate the opportunity to debate this. I think whatever our disagreements on it, we'd all agree, it's the biggest single issue facing the council and indeed facing the country. And certainly, the housing crisis has caused unprecedented hardship across Fingal and in Dublin fifteen, which I represent. My couple of comments, maybe, I think we'd all agree that we want a significant increase in delivery of social and affordable housing. And this was actually something, the council's land banks were extensively discussed during the development plan. I'd make a couple of points, maybe, that haven't been touched on already. I mean, firstly, I think this is a, this is a national problem. It's not simply a problem which can be solved purely by Fingal council. There's been a devastating failure of national government to support and finance local authorities adequately to build, to, 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 to build homes, particularly social and affordable homes. And there has as well been a serious failure of the private market, and I do agree with the motion on that. I mean, we have in, in, across Fingal, and I want to thank the, the housing department for the answers on this, we have a very large number of inactive sites where full planning permission has been given, but no construction of housing has taken place. So there's fifty seven inactive sites of ten or more dwellings across Fingal. And that's a total of thirteen thousand six hundred and sixty four units that have never been commenced. And then a further hundred and seventy four inactive single or small sites that have a total of two hundred and ninety nine dwelling units not commenced. So that's almost fourteen thousand homes that have never been built that have full planning permission. And that does really undermine the argument made by the likes of Paul Hyde and former members of the discredited Board Plenula administration that the planning system was what was delaying the delivery of housing. And certainly, there is a need for much greater, much greater focus on delivery of social and affordable housing. I would though make one point in terms of the motion, and I'm sure this is inadvertent, but I would like to see every motion on housing also refer to the fact, which is brought home to me at every door that I canvass in Dublin fifteen, that we need housing which is affordable and which is delivered in conjunction with essential infrastructure. That there is, housing has, has been delivered, Dublin fifteen is very densely populated, but it's been delivered, delivered without adequate provision of schools, community centres and childcare. And that causes immense hardship, almost equal to the housing crisis itself. So I would like to see that recognised by members in any motion that's brought forward on this.
Thank you. councillor Newman?
Thanks again, Mayor. Obviously, yeah, in agreement with the motion. But, you know, a couple of minutes ago, I did applaud the council and the executive for the work that they've been doing on the housing, social housing and acquiring land and selling land to make that happen as well. So we do have housing targets, national housing targets to meet. And I think we are on target to, you know, to meet the targets as such. And so I don't know how we can actually go and build a whole lot more than the targets that we have. I think there's an allocation of that, but that's not to say that things couldn't be speeded up a bit, you know. But, you know, there's no way the council can just deliver everything on its own and design, you know, and employ people to, you know, manage the whole lot, employ others to do the work. It has to be a partnership arranged with maybe some developers, some contractors. I worked in Ballymore in nineteen sixty, whatever it was, a long time ago, anyway. And I mean, I don't think that was totally run by D C C, but it solved the housing crisis at the time. And there was lots of different contractors involved in that. So I don't see how the council could manage it all on themselves. They can manage the development through acquiring and engaging the contractors, the designers, everybody else to do it. So I presume going down that road, I would be happy to support the motion on that basis. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Newman. The manager, let's go.
Well, firstly, to reassure the councillors that there's huge ambition and huge pace in Fingal. We have a target of building six and a half thousand units up to twenty twenty six. That's social and affordable dwellings. And we're, we're well underway with that and we're using every method of construction. And we're using every method of delivery. And we're dealing with the direct delivery ourselves, dealing with the private sector and dealing with the approved housing bodies. Some of the councillors may not be aware, but as recently as, as in May, before the last council went for election, we brought two schemes through the council for noting under the one seven nine A provision, which allows us secure early and quick planning permission. So there were, there was four hundred and forty. So there was 449 units on two sites, one in Donna Bay and the other here in Swords. And we're moving now at pace to get those to procurement. In terms of what does direct delivery means, it means units that are funded as social units. And we typically engage a builder to build those units. We don't have a direct labour team employed that could deal with that type of delivery. And then we work typically with the same builder to build out affordable units, which we end up putting to the market for sale to first-hand buyers at an affordable rate. So we are in every town and village in Fingal building houses. Churchfields, you mentioned, councillor Copinger. There's 180 homes under construction there at present. We expect the first delivery of those homes in November. That builder broke ground on St Bridges Day on the 1st of February. So in terms of pace of delivery, we're pleased that that builder will deliver on time and on budget and will get keys to the door for the first of those homes this year. In addition, I suppose we have a really expert team in our housing, our architects and our quantity surveyors. So they're working, as I mentioned earlier, carrying out enabling works in advance of moving to the permission and the tendering of various schemes again to save time. And they are also looking at best value for money, making sure that we deliver the units appropriate to the end purchaser's income, where they're affordable. And then in the last year, of course, we borrowed to fund cost rental as well. And that will be available on Churchfields as part of that development. We'll be moving on to the next phase of Churchfields, which secure planning permission from a Borpe Planola. I think one of the councillors mentioned the need to have regard to the environmental legislation. That's just a requirement and an absolute requirement for us to go on Borpe Planola for permission where those environmental issues arise. So again, with Churchfields, we now have permission for the next phase. And we'll be moving to appoint the developer for those units as soon as August. So I suppose we've ramped up considerably in the last two years. In addition, I suppose in the first quarter of 2024, I think three times as many units started in Fingal as had been the case in the first quarter of 2023. So that's good news. Can we do more? Yes, we're still looking to acquire more land and to, you know, look at opportunities that will bring more homes, keys to the door, to people as quickly as possible. Mr Burke, my right here would be aware that we typically allocate about 800 to 900 social units to people from our social housing list each year, and that's increasing. So again, more to be done in that space, but a good level of momentum there already. On the Scribbles Town, I think most members would know it as they're on sync lands. You know that you zone that land in the most recent development plan that was adopted last year in February. It does need quite a considerable amount of infrastructure, so we'll be working through that. And I know Mr McLeish can bring an update on the master planning for that site in due course to the council. Again, looking to deliver housing. In Churchfields, I just also want to make it clear that we were determined to deliver infrastructure first on that site. Members will be aware that it's an area that's had a lot of investment in social housing over the years. So we wanted to make sure that we not only delivered for the new residents, but also for the existing residents there. There will be a park ready in the coming two months that will be available to the existing residents and also service the new residents along the river there. You know the link road we've put in there as well. So it's joined up thinking, and I hope it will end up as a good place to live. That's what we're aiming for. And the pace in the first year or two of these schemes is largely hidden. A lot of work being done by the experts here in-house and those that we bring on board to assist us. But then, once we get to site, the houses are literally rising out of the ground. I could give you another example in Donna Bay as well, where units are simply going to be ready in a matter of months following the foundations being put in place. So happy to bring councillors around some of these housing sites if you'd like to see them. And can we do more and will we do more? We will, of course. We're really looking to take up every opportunity. So I can't but agree with the motion. That's what we're doing. That's what we're trying to achieve. Other than, I suppose, the context it's set in, which doesn't reflect the level of activity in the county and the level of pace we have injected in to our delivery of housing in the last number of years. So again, I hope that answers all the questions for you.
Thank you to Chair Executive. Councillor Copinger, would you like to come back in?
Just to answer a couple of things. First of all, the motion doesn't say that the council has to do all of this itself. You know, that's the first thing I'd say. Secondly, councillor Neuman asked the question, well, what more can we do? Well, we've 7,000 families in Dublin 15 on the housing lists. So if we continue on in the way we are, they'll be on those lists for years and years and years and years. Already, we have 13-year waiting lists. We have to do more. We have a budget surplus of 10 billion in this country. And this council is also cash-rich and has a massive rate base and is one of the richest councils in the country. So the idea that more can't be done. One of the things that councillor Lady touched on, housing estates used to be, I grew up in a council house. There was 400 houses in the estate. Now the council's built, you know, 20 houses here, 50 houses there. The planning permissions have been ascertained. You could have got bigger planning permissions and be building bigger and to scale. So it's nothing to do with the planning situation. So the targets are being met, no doubt about it. But the targets are ridiculous. That's the reality. I sat on an eruptive special housing committee, and they talked about what an emergency this was, and nothing changed. You know, so clearly, there isn't the will. The political will is not there. And one of the things I would say is that this is going to be a massive issue in the general election. And while, you know, councillor Lady's party did quite well in the local elections, I'm not so sure they'll get the same response